Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. Everybody, please take your seats. The May 8th, 2025 adjourned regular meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. Please remember, public comment is only for the items listed on the agenda. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk. Remote particip-- excuse me. Remote participants, if you would like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak is called on. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Conrad? Here. Councilmember Stuart, currently absent. Councilmember Yaring? Here. Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein? Present. Mayor Riggins? Here. You have a quorum.
Scott, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May 2nd, 2025.
May we please have an approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No objections? It is so ordered. And, sorry guys, I'm still learning how to do this. We will now consider the consent calendar. Remote participants, please raise your hand in Zoom if you would like to speak on the consent calendar. Do we have any in-person speakers for the consent calendar? Okay, Anne? Kamaru? Anne Kaye, are you available?
Hello.
Hello.
It's Anne Kamaras, but Anne Kaye's fine. I'll make it easy for you. Actually, my long name is much longer, and hopefully no one uses that because I'm getting pulled over. So just quickly, we've had a tough time with open meeting laws here in Malibu, and openness and transparency. As you know, you recently voted to acquire radios that are encrypted, thus keeping the public on a not-need-to-know basis because they don't need to know. So that's--
I'm sorry to interrupt. I believe this is on--
Public comments.
We have open public comments?
There's no general comment today. It's only on the items on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
So it would have to be on--
So I'll come back?
So this would just be on the Palisades ad hoc?
It would have to be on the ad hoc, which is the only other item besides the appeal. We do have a meeting on Monday, though. You can speak at general comment.
The consent calendar, item 1B on the water storage, can I--
Yes.
But can I come back because I left--
That is what this time right now is for.
I know, but I got mixed up. Can I get my--
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. So can you take somebody else?
We don't have anyone else, though.
Oh.
There's no item to be done until we get to the staff report on item 1B.
So just to clarify, we have a consent calendar item, the Palisades Fire Ad Hoc. That is consent calendar item, and all of the public comment cards, there is more than one mayor. Those are for the Palisades Fire Ad Hoc consent calendar item.
Oh, okay, okay. I misunderstood. Okay. I will take the other speakers if you'd like to get in line for that one. She didn't have her notes. She was going to get her notes so she could finish, so I can put her in line with the others. You're welcome to speak now, or I'll take you in line and you'll have your full three minutes that way. Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much. Excuse the confusion. I just thought we had full-blown public comments today. So there's no need to reinvent the wheel. City of Malibu adopted the LA County Fire Code, and with that, water storage and draft hydrants, which pretty much makes every parcel here in Malibu that can obtain potable water legal to build on. This is from LA County's Fire Department. They use this video to train, and it was produced here in Malibu 22 years ago with the mayor that just passed away, and I'll play it for you now. I'll try to play it.
This was as a result of the disastrous 1993 Kinaloa, Altadena, and Malibu fires. Sometime after that, there was a determination made that they need to look at providing auxiliary water sources. After August 13th, 1995, the Los Angeles County Fire Department, along with the Board of Supervisors, adopted a change in the Fire Code regulations relative to existing swimming pools and new construction swimming pools in residential areas. So from 1995 on, August of 95 on, any new pool constructed in high fire zone areas are required to have this draft hydrant system in place. Every other pool or spa that's 5,000 gallons or greater that's existing, they're required to have signage at the address side of the house indicating that there is a water source available there. They're not required to retrofit this system in, they're just required to advise us through signage that on that property, there's either a spa or a pool that has 5,000 gallons or greater of an auxiliary water source available for us to draw water out of in the event of a wildfire. Well, if you look at this--
Sorry. It doesn't cost that much more. This was produced with LA County Fire Department, the captain of Station 70, 22 years ago. Basically, the city of Malibu is negligent for not enforcing their own ordinances to make sure that any new swimming pools have a draft hydrant, and if they can't, have at least 5,000 gallons available onsite. Thank you.
To be clear, the item on the agenda for consent is whether or not the Palisades Ad Hoc Committee is charged or can take on the additional duties of reviewing the water tank discussion. So it's not about the water tank, it's not about any of those things. So it's just about the makeup of the ad hoc and what the duties that they are, the parameters in which they function. Okay. Next speaker, Joe Drummond, Scott Dietrich, and Don Schmidt.
Hi, I didn't have much to say. I just wanted to say on behalf of the Malibu, Eastern Malibu Task Force, that we obviously want an ad hoc committee for this, the fire disaster recovery, for sewers, for water tanks, for anything, so please form it and keep it, and thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Scott, Don, and Damian Leroy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just to say, we need this ad hoc, and thank you for all you guys are doing a lot of work, but we need to get the water tanks in, so anything you can do to further that for people who don't have enough water, please do it.
Thank you. Don, Damian, and Lynn Dornhelm.
Afternoon, councilmembers. Don Schmitz. Certainly, ad hoc committee is a grand idea. However, I'm confused because I believe that this council's heard a lot of testimony and already deliberated and directed staff to bring this to them as it pertained to the water storage tanks. The handout that I gave you, which is right here, is straight from the NFPA 22, the National Fire Department Standards for On-Site Water Storage, and I personally have designed and obtained entitlements for dozens, if not hundreds, of homes that have implemented this. The only question is whether or not they will allow it in areas that are not above the pressure zone. And this is of critical importance because you have a number of constituents that have substandard water infrastructure, and the water district is talking many years until that gets built. So I frankly was hopeful that the city council was just going to go ahead and set this issue aside. As you know, you've got a lot of constituents that are currently already getting ready to process their applications. If they're going to have the water storage tank, which is necessary to make it safe pursuant to Fire Department standards, then you need to show that on the plans. If there's going to be a pad for the tank, they need to show it on the plans. As you can see in the diagram I gave you, they need to show where the standpipe, the four-inch standpipe, is going to be going forward. And of course, to get their approvals, they need to have Fire Department clearance as well. So, and last point is that the governor's executive order specifically exempted all requisite infrastructure for these people to rebuild. So these tanks in the standpipe does not require a coastal development permit. It's not relevant to the local coastal program. So I would urge you, I don't want to put it in a pejorative way. I know you're not trying to kick the can down the road, but it's really becoming a problem for a number of people to move forward with the rebuild applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Damian, Lynn Dornhelm, and Estelle Day? Damian Leroy? Okay, Lynn Dornhelm?
Can you pass it on to me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not going to speak that long anyway, because I didn't understand what this meeting was for, and so again, we come not understanding. I definitely am in favor of an ad hoc committee if that can resolve the problem very quickly, because our house, the one that burned down, was rebuilt over a period of time up to 2007. Took a long time. And we put in a pool, and we were told that we were going to have to put in a draft, but strangely, just while that was happening, they said, "Oh, no, you don't need a draft." And so that came from the city. And so it's really interesting to me why this is so complicated, especially from what we've been hearing, is that we should be already, and I appreciated so much Mary Ann saying, "Just go ahead, submit your plans. It's only one department." And so I guess we just have to go on good faith that we should just go ahead, hire, spend the money, and produce plans and submit them. And if that's not the case, oh, and then one other thing, is that we've been really suffering through, you know, the arriving and then not being agendized and all this kind of stuff. And then we got the letter, we saw it through Maroni and all that. But if the city council could please include us in knowing where we stand, rather than us wondering and talking among ourselves and trying to figure out what we can do, it's a waste of valuable time for us, and I think that you don't want us coming, doing floor shows here for no reason. I don't think, anyway. That's all I have to say.
My recommendation is stay in touch with the Malibu Rebuilds Center. They'll have the up-to-date information. They can guide you as to the status of things also.
Okay, great.
So you can always stay in touch with that staff members there.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. So Estelle Day? And Norm Haney? Estelle Day? Oh, sorry. Go ahead. No worries.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm Estelle Day. I'm a third-generation resident of Carbon Mesa Road. Sitting behind me today are just a fraction of the residents and professionals fighting to rebuild the homes we lost on Carbon Mesa. Lynn, who is also here, and she'll probably be speaking, is a fourth-generation resident on Carbon Mesa since 1940. Thank you for placing the water-fire-flow issue today on today's agenda. We appreciate that it's finally being heard.
So to be clear, this is not about the water-fire-flow item. This is just about the ad hoc committee and the duties that are assigned to that ad hoc committee.
So is that not on today's agenda?
Only the Palisades Ad Hoc Committee with regards if their duties are charged with also including any information about the water tank issue.
Okay, so-- We're in favor. I walked in late. I might have missed, like, something that just happened, so, okay, so I should maybe hold this thought?
Probably.
Okay. Thank you.
Norm Haney?
Honorable city council members, I am strongly in favor of the committee. You know, hopefully it will be, well, you'll figure out who the members are. What do we know for sure? In a wildfire, we know that the water tanks are dry. That's what we know. It can't help anyone fight a fire. What else do we know? We know that people that had water tanks were able--
It's about the ad hoc, not about the water tanks.
Well, I'm strongly in favor, and I hope you guys get it together as quickly as you can. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Do we have any speakers online?
There are no raised hands on Zoom.
Thank you. So public comments closed. Back up here, so--
May I speak?
When are we going to be able to let these folks know if the Fire Department has approved this stuff? Do they have, we have any schedule from them that says we're going to get this thing resolved?
Yes. Mayor, members of council, as we discussed at the last council meeting, the Fire Department is still reviewing it. We hope to have some more information. Anything that I have, I'll update you on Monday at the council meeting, but we know they are working on a regional approach and hope to have some positive answers for us very soon that they'll be able to attend. We're trying to agendize it for the May 27th meeting if possible.
So we're not going to get an answer this next Monday?
No.
I mean, this is okay.
Chris?
It doesn't help to grumble about the Fire Department taking its time. I mean, they've sent us a letter. We're trying to get them to work, and they're taking their time, and they want to get it right. Look, first of all, Don's correct. We actually already addressed this. We addressed it when we did the LCP amendments, and it is addressed in the governor's order insofar as whether a CDP is required. The only issue is whether the Fire Department is going to permit it pursuant to the Fire Code. That's the only issue, because we already have made accommodation for it to be part of the rebuilds, like-for-like rebuilds, not others. Just want to make that clear. Do your like-for-like rebuilds, don't do other things. So if you're doing a like-for-like rebuild, the governor's order says you don't need a CDP to do what's necessary to make the home protected from fire, to get your water flow. However, the type of water flow that needs to be used is not consistent with the existing Fire Code, and the Fire Department therefore has to make accommodation to say it's okay, they won't find it to be a violation, or that they'll go along with it. That's what we're working on, trying to get them to come and let us know. Notwithstanding all of that, there's no harm in putting this onto the ad hoc that already exists for other, for certain other post-Palisades fire issues. We can perhaps interface with the Fire Department, try to get them to move faster, but you know, you do want to make sure that they make the right decision, not in the bureaucratic sense, but in the sense of making sure it's safe. You don't want to build houses that aren't safe. I have a degree of optimism they're going to go along with this, because otherwise they're holding up a whole lot of rebuilds, and the governor and everyone else wants those rebuilds to be accomplished. So I'm in favor of adding this to our ad hoc. And the, we do have an ad hoc, by the way, whoever mentioned it, for the sewer that was already separately created, and that's moving forward.
Well, I'm glad we cleared that up, because we have spoken about this, and I feel like there shouldn't be that much controversy about adding water to people's properties so that they can be adequately protected. I do feel bad for the Carbon Beach guys, Lynn and Estelle. Along with the rebuild center, there's also a rebuild manager, ambassador, I guess, with Abe, and he could maybe, Abe Roy, help you--
He hasn't been appointed yet.
He hasn't been appointed yet, but maybe when this person comes, besides the rebuild center, you can coordinate with them so you can get more information about the meetings and what's coming for you guys. I'm all for water. We've talked about it. I think it makes sense to be on the ad hoc, unless we want to do another ad hoc, which might be kind of redundant. But if you're overwhelmed, I would be on this ad hoc if you wanted.
I'm happy to have two other people, one of us and one other person. I mean, I don't really care who does this. It seems to me it's an easy enough thing to just add it to the plate of the existing ad hoc that monitors meetings and reports on developments, but this could just as easily be a part of the sewer ad hoc. It could be a separate ad hoc. hoc. It could be a separate ad hoc. It really doesn't matter. If you have a burning desire to be on it, I'd be happy to have you be on it and not me. I mean, that's where I come down on it. But I really think that this one, it's, it's important to the residents, but it's much ado about nothing in the sense that we've already done our homework. We've already facilitated the use of the tanks. We are waiting for the fire department to give sign-off that they will accept that, because if they won't accept it, we can approve it all we want. It isn't going to be able to be used. Um, we've already, and if we wouldn't accept it, the fire department couldn't allow it to happen. But we've already accepted it. And, and, you know, and one thing, I just want to say, I, look, I understand that people are still in trauma from losing their homes. I, I get that. People are still trying to get their, are trying to get their lives back together. It doesn't help to keep coming to every meeting and telling us that we need to deal with this issue, because we are well aware of needing to deal with this issue, and it's not on the agenda. Uh, it will be on the agenda. It's not that complicated to figure out what is before the city council and what's not. And we have a lot of other business, and we are focused on this issue. It's being addressed.
Okay. Um, so my recommendation, it just, it becomes one of the other items that the, the Palisades Ad hoc Fire Rebuild Committee is doing. And we just, comes under that scope. So, any objection to that?
No.
Okay. So can we have a...
If it's going to come to the ad, can you just let us know what the fire department, what the holdup with the fire department is? Because I don't understand it.
We got a letter from them last week.
That said that they're...
It said that they had hoped to come on the 28th to report on their decision, but they are taking, it requires more assessment on their part to figure out the right answer, and they will get back to us as promptly as they can. And we were just told by the assistant, by the acting city manager, that we're going to have, hear from them at the end of this month.
So can I get a motion to approve the consent item with the inclusion of the water tanks in the Palisades Fire Rebuild ad hoc?
Helen, are you cool with...
I am.
Being Mary Ann and me?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make that motion.
I second it.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All, all in favor, yes. No opposed. Thank you.
All right. Do we, do we have an update about when Councilmember Stewart will arrive?
Sorry, Councilmember Stewart is stuck on PCH, so...
We can, we can recess and resume when he gets here? I don't know how long it's going to be.
So the, the balance of this hearing is going to be the public hearing on the appeals. Anyone who's not here for that and, you know, doesn't need to stick around, that's, that's the thing we're going to be doing going forward. And nothing else?
I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute recess, just to give him the opportunity to park his car, so...
Is he here?
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like, I'd like to apologize to everybody for being late. Uh, I was the main speaker at an event at UCLA. They, I knew it was going to be hard to get through the checkpoint. They moved it around, and I just got here. So I apologize to everybody. It was not my intention to be late. With that, back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. So let me check my script. What I'm supposed to do here? Okay, we're going to move on to item 2A, Appeals. We have two appeals for the same project. Appeals of Planning Commission Resolution 24-021 regarding Coastal Development Permit Number 23019 with Site Plan Review 23024, an application to construct a new single-family residence, second unit, and associated development. Uh, we will now hear item 2A, Appeals of the Planning Commission Resolution 24021 regarding Coastal Development Permit. Please raise your hand in Zoom if you would like to speak on this item, and you will be called after the staff report. Uh, any recusals or disclosures?
I have a disclosure. Um, so for the sake of transparency, I want to disclose that I previously received publicly distributed brochures from the appellant, Dawn Erickson. These were not campaign materials. My name was not on them. They are brochures that she distributes at other venues as well. I placed them in my campaign office alongside other community materials, including flyers from the Malibu PTA, the Shark Fund, and the Boys and Girls Club. Prior to this appeal, I had a conversation with the appellant about her art, similar to conversations that I've had with many community members. I also met with the applicant, Steve Kent, twice, and his wife Gladys, once at his property for approximately 45 minutes, and once at City Hall two days ago for about an hour. I met with the appellant, Ms. Erickson, on her property for about 45 minutes. I also met with the other appellants, the Phillipsons, at their home and sat with them in their living room for 45 minutes. In addition, I've watched both public planning commission meetings related to this project, and I've met with several members of city staff, including Principal Planner Tyler Eaton, the city attorney Trevor, and the city biologist Courtney. I've also read many of the emails and materials submitted as part of public record. I have not received any compensation from any of the parties involved. I have no personal or financial interest in the outcome of this appeal, and I am confident in my ability to consider this matter fairly and impartially. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Conrad, just to follow up on that, we, we discussed this a little bit. Um, there would be potentially two bases that would require a recusal related to the, the receipt of these brochures. One would be if it was a campaign contribution that exceeded $500 in value. If you're confident it did not exceed that, then, then, um, and if it was not a, a campaign material, then it would not require a recusal. Or if it was a gift valued at $630 or more. And if you're confident it is not, the value of those does not reach that, then there's no requirement for you to recuse.
Thank you. I am confident. Thank you. Steve?
Okay. Uh, I listen, I've got Don's brochures all over my house. Uh, and I've had them for a very long time, so, uh, and I'm glad to have them. Uh, I listened to the planning commission meeting, uh, listened to it twice. Uh, I had a meeting with Mr. Kent, uh, talking about, you know, his, his issues. I've had conversations with Dawn, uh, and I've read the volumes of paperwork that has come across my desk tied to this project. So, uh, that's it.
Councilmember Ewing, just to confirm, you've not received, um, the amount of brochures that would exceed that value that I previously stated?
We have not, I've never, no, I have not received anything even close to all that. Although, in theory, they're very good, so, you know. But I, I can't put a price on them.
But it wouldn't exceed that amount, correct?
I don't believe, no.
Bruce?
Um, I have spoken briefly with Tyler. Um, I have deliberately avoided having any conversations with any of the parties, the applicants or the appellants, about this project, as I do with every project. Um, I learned in preparation for this that I had received a $103.50 campaign contribution from Dawn, and I confirmed with the, um, city attorney that that is not a disqualifying event unless I believe that it causes me to have a bias, which I don't. Um, and I too have received the brochure. I think we were given them as city council members, um, at, at least one meeting, if not two, over the last past four years. And, um, I think I gave it to one of my friends. Uh, but it, it's a beautiful brochure, and it's got nothing to do with this appeal.
Doug?
Uh, yes. Uh, my disclosure, I met with Steve Kent and his wife at their invitation at the project site on April 21st, had two subsequent phone calls initiated by Mr. Kent regarding additional facts he wished to highlight to me. I met with Dawn Erickson at her invitation at her home next door to the project site on April 25th. She provided me with additional information and drawing and a drainage map for the area which I believe is being presented today. Additionally, we walked the boundary of the two properties. That is the subject of, uh, of being or not being escher. I've also received several emails from her, which were also sent to the other council members and city staff. The Phillipsons did not make contact with me, and I did not meet with them, nor did I enter their property. I watched the planning commission meeting of April 15, 2024, covering this application. I've also received numerous emails from the public regarding this appeal. Other than encouraging the consideration of their position, there was no additional information that was not provided elsewhere. I did not learn of anything that is not in the distributed packages of information or the planning commission meeting, other than my own observation of the area in question as being escher. Uh, I also did not have any reportable conversations with any other council members, nor did I have any campaign contributions or similar benefit that would be subject to Senate Bill 1439. And in particular, I have not received any campaign contributions from any of the applicants, uh, or the appellants.
One last thing I forgot to mention. Um, I have multiple friends in town who both oppose and support this project, um, some of whom have even solicited or discussed with me the project. Um, I didn't learn anything from those conversations, and, um, I don't believe they have any, um, influence on my decision either.
Okay. And mine, um, I believe I was present at the, um, planning commission meeting last year. I have read the staff report, uh, all 878 pages of it, uh, received a packet from Ms. Erickson, um, with regards to, um, her information and brochure and, um, education materials, uh, regarding her property and the neighboring property. I met with the Phillipsons at their property. I met with the Kents, um, on an off-site property, but to discuss this. And I have had, um, a couple phone conversations with Kent. I discussed it briefly with, um, senior principal planner? What's your title now, Tyler? Principal Planner? Principal Tyler? Planner Eaton? And, uh, conversations with the city attorney.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, just to follow members' disclosures, as few of you, uh, said that you had conversations with people, did you learn any information, any evidence that's not in the public record or in the staff report and materials?
I did not receive any, uh, learn any additional information than what is included in the staff report and emails. Thank you.
Any, anybody else?
No.
No.
You guys, all, all your information was within the bounds of the reports?
The only information I have that is outside the report is from reading the LIP and the municipal code and, um, evaluating the words of them that are not printed in the reports.
That, that's just legal issue. That's not, uh, evidence of, you have to disclose.
I think I do have one. I got an email this morning from Kent, Steve Kent and Vides, I believe. I don't know if that made it into the staff report, but I'm disclosing it out of abundance of caution that they tried to find compromise this morning. I have no idea if that's in the staff report. Is that okay?
Okay. There wasn't any evidence about whether, about the actual project or the findings required to be made for it, though?
No.
Okay.
And just to clarify, that correspondence was distributed to the entire body.
Thank you. Okay. So, uh, we are going to ask for a staff report now.
All righty. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, this next item, as mentioned, is two appeals, actually, for the planning commission approval of CDP 23-019 for a single-family home, a second unit, and some accessory development, uh, at 30053 Harvester Road. On March 18th, 2024, the planning commission, um, heard this item for the first time, and then the item was continued to the April 15, 2024 meeting to allow staff some additional time to research and address some of the concerns that were raised at that meeting. On April 15th, 2024, the planning commission heard this item for a second time. Uh, the applicant had proposed one revision between March 18 and April 15th, um, to address a concern about the ADU in the garage, and, uh, that, that had been dropped at that point. Um, this same project was reviewed, and the planning commission approved the project on a 3-2 vote. Uh, within 10 days, as required by the code, uh, both appellants, uh, submitted their appeals, appeal number 24-004 and appeal, uh, 24-005 on April 25th, uh, 2024, I should say. Um, just the vicinity map of where we are, this is the Malibu Park neighborhood. Um, it is, um, the project is there with the blue star, and in, uh, sandwiched on, on either side is, are the appellants of this project. The westerly neighbor to the left is, uh, the first appeal we'll discuss, and the easterly neighbor, uh, to the right is the second appeal we'll discuss here tonight. This project is for a 4,270 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with a 970 square foot basement, a 750 square foot attached three-car garage. There's also a detached 900 square foot ADU, second unit, a detached 500 square foot accessory garage, a 432 square foot detached yoga studio, a permeable driveway... garage, a 432-square-foot detached yoga studio, a permeable driveway, proposed swimming pools, and new landscaping, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. This project also is requesting, or the applicant is requesting, a site plan review for construction above 18 feet, up to 24 feet, it's actually 22 feet in height, for a flat roof. Here is the site plan you see here. The applicant wanted to cite their development at the highest point of the property to maximize use of the ocean, and it's sited farther away from Harvester Road, so it's not abrupting or upfronting the road there. Here's a slope analysis that kind of just speaks more to that. So the blue is the flatter portions of this parcel, and the green are, it does get a little steeper. However, those are still approvable slopes per the LCP and the MMC. Here's a west elevation to give you guys an idea of how this interplays with the hillside. The project, as mentioned, is 22 feet at its highest point, shown on the west side of the property here. On the east side of the property, because of the grade change, the structure is actually 12 feet tall at its lowest point and gets up to about 20 feet tall at its highest point, and then kind of descends to blend in with the natural topography of the hillside as it goes further south. As you can see on the north elevation, the site steps up, and so on one side, on the west side, it is 22 feet, and on the east side, it is 12 feet at that corner. So now we're going to get into the appeals. So appeal number one is the westerly neighbor, and they had a litany of issues, but the primary issue is an ESHA concern. So the the appellant here is claiming that there's ESHA and some native tree concerns on the border between their property and the subject property. This area is a natural drainage course that our public works department even maintains some culverts that seep into this area, so, meaning that water does flow through this area that is directed from the roads through this natural drainage course. Here is a map of the environmentally sensitive habitat area map in the LCP. You'll see that, as mapped, the blue line streams are approximately 900 feet away on either side. These are going to be important in your discussion tonight, so we have two major definitions that we're considering. The environmentally sensitive habitat area, as shown on this screen, and we also have the stream definition, because the appellant claims that that area, that drainage course is actually meets the definition of a stream in the LIP as shown here. The highlighted portions I want to call out is, by definition, an LCP indicated stream Stay here, because what happens when you take recesses is, it'll come back up, and then it'll take 10 minutes to get us.
I got a thumbs up from Parker.
Christina, are we aware of what time it cut out? Just want to make sure that everyone can...
The moment Parker got up is when it cut.
Okay.
So before the slot?
I was watching the screen up front and the screen.
He was giving us the definition of a stream and ESHA.
Okay. Tyler, so just make sure you slightly back up.
It appears to be back. We're just double-checking that all of it's in order.
Why is the status report not available for inspection? Do they have a major report?
We don't take comments from the audience.
We're not in the meeting.
It's not, the meeting is not recessed.
Parker says we're good, so...
Is he 100% sure? Because we're not seeing it on the screen here.
Can somebody log into Zoom and just try?
There we go.
Okay, we're back up. Christina?
Confirming for the record, we're back on Zoom.
Thank you, Tyler. If you could resume with the definition of ESHA.
No problem.
Thank you.
No, no problem. So, yes, what we're going to be considering tonight is this definition here, does this drainage course meet the definition of environmentally sensitive habitat area? And specifically, is it a stream? And again, to be qualified as a stream per our current LCP definition, a stream must have a bed or channel having banks, and it must support or have supported riparian vegetation at one point. Some other, some other code sections to consider when we make these ESHA determinations. So if you remember, the, it is not an LCP-mapped stream. Those are 900 feet away. However, things that are not mapped can still be determined ESHA if they follow the appropriate protocols and channels. So the city shall determine the physical extent of the habitat, meaning the definition of ESHA, based on the applicant's site-specific biological study, as well as available independent evidence. Further, related to these, who can determine these Esches? These documents must be prepared by a qualified biologist or resource expert. Starting with the initial biological inventory prepared for this application by the applicant's biologist, Edith Reed. She indicated that this drainage course, these "goleys" in quotes, are not indicated as blue line stream beds on the historical USGS map, and their hydraulic regimes are best characterized as ephemeral. No wetland conditions were observed during the survey, with no exception of an immature sycamore and toyon in the west gully. The dominant vegetation consists of non-native landscape species. She further goes on to say that no special status species would be expected to occur on the property due to the lack of suitable habitat. Similarly, no raptors would be expected to nest on the property. No native or protected trees are present on the property itself. That was the initial report. So what are these "goleys" that Edith Reed is referring to? So here, you can see, this is from Google Earth, and this is kind of a snapshot from above, and the ocean is up to the, it's to the south, obviously, but up in this photo here. And what you see here on the right is the area in question, and it's what I would call a secondary drainage system. The primary drainage system, as you can see here to the left, is east of the eastern neighbor, and that is the primary drainage basin that feeds into this drainage course that goes down to the ocean. The area in question is a secondary drainage that feeds into that primary one. Again, going back to what the code requires, so it must be the biological, the ESHA determination must be based on the applicant's site-specific biological study, as well as independent evidence. It also must be prepared by a qualified biologist or a resource expert. That's what the code requires. At this point in time, we, I've listed out for you all the experts that have submitted correspondence on this, on this topic. We have the Edith Reed report, the bio-inventory in 2023. She also submitted a rebuttal, I think it was presented this morning, to you all. That's a determination that this is not a stream, nor is there ESHA on the site. Marcus England, I'll go in chronological order, so Edith Reed. And then we have Lauren Harris, who was submitted by the appellate team, an ecologist, and she had some observations in her memo in 2024. I should say, she did not definitively define the area as ESHA, but she did say that there's potential ESHA, and it needs to be further studied, so I just want to make sure that's clear. Then we have, in 2025, we have Travis Longcor, who is an environmental scientist, just based on what I saw in his resume, and he submitted a memorandum and a rebuttal to our biologist and the Edith Reed biologist's report. So that was in 2025. And then again, last night, we got a second opinion from the applicant's group, from Marcus England, a separate biologist, who provided his own analysis and a rebuttal to the Travis Longcor report. Our own city biologist has done three memorandums on this project. One in March 2024 to address the concerns from Lauren Harris, another in August 2024 for the appellant, when there was a claim that she could not have studied the site properly since she had not gone to the appellant's property. The biologist went out to the appellant's property and did a secondary analysis, and her analysis did not, her conclusions did not change. And thirdly, we asked her to do one last report, one last review of the Travis Longcor report, just to see if there was anything in that document that had changed her mind, and she determined that there was nothing, there was not new information presented in her position that was the same on the matter. So regarding CEQA, because this was also in the appellant's, the appellant's package. So the planning commission approved CEQA guideline sections 15, 303A and E, which are Class III categorical exemptions under CEQA. These exemptions include one single-family residence, second dwelling unit in a residential zone, and they include accessory structures such as garage, carports, patios, and swimming pools, and fences. I want to say that we use these CEQA exemptions, these categorical exemptions, on hundreds of projects in the city, year after year, and they have not really been challenged. I will also say that even if there's a determination of ESHA tonight, that does not mean that it qualifies for a further CEQA examination. Now we're going to get into appeal number two, which is the easterly neighbor. And again, they had a litany of issues that they wanted to address, but primarily, their concerns were over views and neighborhood character. So again, going back to the code, because it's important, the code requires that when you do a primary view determination, that primary view corridor that gets protected shall exclude the first 18 feet of the proposed building height, as measured from the natural finish grade, whichever is lower. So essentially, that means that the first 18 feet of a home is not allowed to be, is not protected in someone's primary view. It is only development above 18 feet. Going back to the project, we did a primary view determination at this appellant's home to, you know, try to address her needs, or their needs, I should say. And what was seen on site was that essentially, the portions of the home that are 12 and 15 feet tall block the views of the Santa Monica Mountain. And again, anything under 18 feet is not protected. There are 20, this, this home is 22 feet tall on the other side, as the hillside descends that way, but those views will be blocked by the 12 to 15-foot walls, which essentially is not protected. Here's just a different angle. Again, the 15 to 18 feet portions of the building will block the 22-foot portions, and by the way, those are just views of the sky in the background, so those aren't an LCP-indicated scenic view. And then here is a 20-foot, 20-foot portion of the house. Again, most of it is blue sky. There is some ocean that it's hard to see there, but it's well below the 18-foot line. So what does all this look like in reality? So here, I try to demonstrate for you guys the photo, and in relation to that elevation I showed you. So you can see here that what the, what the appellant unfortunately will be looking at is a 12 to 18-foot tall wall that will block their views of the Santa Monica Mountains. They are, they are, they are beautiful views. I'm not going to sugarcoat that, but what is allowed in the code is to develop up to 18 feet. And so here's a demonstration showing the north elevation, that that grade steps up, and at that point of the house, it is 12 to 18 feet. The last thing the neighbor, this appellant, was concerned with is neighborhood character. So this is a very subjective topic, just to, I think you guys all understand that. But what we try to do is, what are the characteristics of this site compared to their neighbors, at the very minimum? And at the very minimum, you can see that all of the immediate neighbors, I would say all of them, have this minimal setback to their side property lines, which the applicant is asking for. I know that that was a point of contention from this appellant, because they were concerned about fire safety, which is, which is definitely noted, obviously, in these times. However, most of this neighborhood enjoys a minimal setback to their side property lines. The applicant also provided a neighborhood character analysis. Now, it should be noted that typically, you know, the neighborhood character finding is only for the SPR for height, and so usually, it's just making a finding that the extra height or the two-story portion of the home is not outside the neighborhood character. Nonetheless, staff still required a further analysis to ensure that the massing, the size, and the appearance of this home did not go outside the neighborhood character. And the applicant provided us this demonstration here. In conclusion, from what was found in this neighborhood character analysis, is that out of the homes studied in the immediate neighborhood, there are four homes with a larger total development square footage than this home proposed, and at least one other within 150 square feet. So is it greater than the average in the neighborhood? Yes. Is it an outlier in the neighborhood? No. It's within the scale 1 to 10. If you're seven out of 10, you're higher than the average, but you're not outside of the scale of the neighborhood. And here we go with a little more pictures just for the council's consideration. This is from Harvester Road, just to kind of see what the, the massing will look like as you look up at the hillsides from Harvester Road. Here's one with the appellant's property to the right there, just to kind of show you a juxtaposition. You can see their, their home with, within the trees there. Here's another one on the west side, the other appellant that we spoke about before. Their home is beyond this vegetation to the left. So I just want to close with this. You know, it is a shame that we cannot reach a compromise prior to this meeting. It is. Do the appellants have a right to be concerned? They do. They've lived here with an empty lot for many years. But does this project meet the objective standards of the LCP and the MMC? It does. And so we are recommending approval of this project tonight, but we're available for any questions.
Any clarifying questions of staff before we open for the appeals?
Tyler, will the city biologist be available today?
No, unfortunately, she's out of town, but she did provide us with a lot of information, so I'll try to answer those questions as best I can. I believe the applicant has a biologist, and I'm sure the appellants also have biologists available.
Okay, so you're going to be able to tell me what the biologist did?
I'll do my best. I'm not a professional. I'm not a qualified biologist, but I'll do my best.
Welcome back, then.
I have a quick question. Thank you, Trevor. That was a lot. Tyler, sorry. My bad. Is there anybody from the fire department here, just in case there's any questions about the trees or setbacks or anything? Nope, no problem. I'd also just want to respectfully request that the applicant, Steve Kent, be given equal time for rebuttal and consistent with the time allotted to the applicants. In interest of fairness and a balanced public hearing, I believe both sides should have the opportunity to prevent their perspectives fully. I don't know how that works, because I don't think that they get as much time as the appellants.
I can speak to it, so.
Thank you.
Kelsey and I looked into this issue, and we saw we had two appeals that were brought forward, and... forward, and this one is more unique than what we've seen in the past. We have cases where there have been different groups of appellants against a project. In this case, there's one on one side of the property with issues trying to push the project one way, and different appellate on the other side pushed it the other way, which is sort of different from some of the past ones. But the past application of the code has been each appellant would get 15 minutes, and the applicant would get 15 minutes. They do not get 15 minutes to respond to each of them, is how it's been done. And each side can reserve as much time as they want for rebuttal, but goes appellant, appellant, applicant, and then the appellant reply, appellant reply, and applicant reply.
Okay, so to be clear, Helen, what you're asking for is a motion for the applicant to have 15 minutes in response to each appellant?
I guess it sounds like that would be fair.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that, and I'll explain why I'm seconding that. You know, I'm a lawyer, I'm a litigator, and I'm trying to think of how that would work in an appeal in court. Actually, it's the opposite. What would happen is if there are multiple appellants, they would split the time that's given to the appellant, and then the appellee would take the same amount of time they always have. Since we didn't tell the appellants that they would only have half of 15 minutes coming in here, it seems to me that it's only fair to change that rule and give the appellee a half an hour to respond to the two 15-minute appeals.
They were informed, I did speak with them, that that was how it's been applied in the past, but if the council is so motivated based on the case...
No, I'm saying that the appellants weren't told that they would only get seven and a half minutes, which is the way it really should be.
I thought you meant the applicant. Got it.
Doug?
Yes, actually, I was going to make that same motion that Councilmember Conrad made, and I fully support it. I think it's only fair, we've got two discrete appeals here, and it's not fair to the applicant to try and shoehorn in responses when people have 15 minutes each, and he's only got 15 minutes to reply to 30 minutes of comment. So I think it would be appropriate to do so.
So would we have appellant one speak, and then the applicant, and then appellant two, and then the applicant, or how are we going to, if this motion passes?
What I recommend, if you want to give more time, would be to have first appellant go, second appellant go, and give the applicant an undivided 30 minutes to allocate as they wish between the two. That would be too difficult, I think, to, some of the issues will overlap, and I think it'll get confusing.
Okay. Steve, do you have any comments? So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. So the applicant will have a total of 30 minutes to answer.
And they can allocate between presentation and rebuttal as they wish.
Okay, so if there's nothing further...
There are. There are questions still.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Tyler, one thing you didn't mention, are there any variances in this permit application?
Not proposed, no.
Okay, so it's a, as you would say, a by right application?
It depends on your guys' determinations tonight, but yes, the planning commission decided that there's no variance necessary for this project.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so a couple of questions, but just to dovetail on that, when Doug said it's by right, the SPR is not by right, right? Everything else is.
Correct. I should have said, there is a discretionary request, it is a site plan review for the height.
And there's argumentation, argument by the appellants, or at least one of them, that if there's ESHA, this needs to be the least environmentally destructive option. It's my understanding that if there is ESHA, if we determine there is ESHA, then a variance would be required, and this appeal is done. The project has to go back to the drawing board and seek a variance. Is that accurate?
Yes, there's a few implications. If this is determined to be ESHA or a stream, it probably will need a variance, because if it's proximity to that, depending on the meets and bounds of that, so I shouldn't say definitively yes, but most likely yes. And then, if it is within a certain range from, if it's determined to be a stream, then it would also be appealable to the coastal, California Coast Commission. It is not currently.
Okay, but if, I have no clue where we're going to go on the ESHA question, but if we were to conclude that there is a stream, and therefore there is ESHA, and that a variance is required, we would not analyze the question of the least environmentally damaging alternative, correct?
Yeah, the correct entitlements would not be in front of you tonight, so you could not make that decision tonight.
Second question. There is a fire safety objection in the record. I recall seeing that in at least one place, if not multiple places. Is that part of one of the appellant's appeals?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I read in the ton of paper we have, that there's an objection that the way this is designed creates a fire danger. There were a number of letters from members of the public, and I think it might be in one of the appeals itself. Is that an issue that's before us?
I don't believe it is. This was reviewed by the fire department, and it meets the access and fire safety requirements.
No, I'm not asking whether there is a fire problem or not, I'm asking if somebody has raised the issue that there's a fire problem.
People believe that there's not enough setback between these homes, specifically the second appellant.
Okay, so one of the issues we need to address, and the answer may or may not be the fire department says there isn't a problem, but one of the issues we have to address is whether this is fire safe, correct?
Sure.
Okay. And that comes from, according to what I read, that comes from 4.45 of the LIP? Or the MMC?
Well, chapter four of the LIP is ESHA.
So it must be the...
What section are you referring to?
I just, page 69 of the, no, sorry, I just took an excerpt here, it says, "Malibu Land Use Plan, Chapter 4, Fire Hazards, Page 69, 4.45. New development shall minimize risks to life and property from fire hazard through." And then there's a number of subdivisions.
So that's a land use policy, yeah, that's in our LUP, which is like the general plan of the LCP.
Okay, so with respect to the SPR, we need to conclude that this is consistent with all of our laws, including the general plan, right?
Correct, yes.
So that comes in that way, and it may or may not satisfy that provision, we have to evaluate that.
This has to be in complete compliance with the LCP.
The LUP is implemented through the LIP, so we need to use the LIP if we are determining that a findings can't be found in a particular instance.
Okay, last question I have, maybe not the last question. There's also a number of arguments being made by multiple people that there needs to be an analysis of whether or not there's a more feasible alternative, and I didn't see where in our law that would come from. Is that an issue here? If it's not ESHA?
So there's a couple of things that they may be referring to, and kind of getting into the weeds here, but no problem. So there's an application submittal requirement, that you need to come up with feasible alternatives. I don't disagree that the applicant could have done a better job of providing better alternatives upfront. However, we did explore many alternatives throughout this process. So yes, we did explore feasible alternatives throughout this process. The second finding you need to make tonight is, is this the most, the least environmentally damaging alternative? So that's in relation to the environment.
We do need to make that determination, even if there's no ESHA?
That is a finding you need to make tonight, yes.
Okay.
Ask one question?
Well, you can ask me.
Okay.
Yes, you may.
And the resolution, you make a statement that this is the least environmentally damaging alternative, right?
Hold on, we need, we need Councilmember Stewart. Can I hear him? Okay. Christina, can you confirm that we're back online? Christina, can you confirm we're good?
We are back online, and the feed is both on the Zoom and the YouTube stream.
I'm sorry. So my last recollection, Tyler, Councilmember Yurin was asking a question.
About the least environmentally damaging alternative, right?
Thank you.
How do we determine that?
Sure. So one way is specifically with grading. The grading ordinance, LIP Chapter 8, speaks to developing on the flatter portions of your lot, so that you don't, to minimize the landform alteration. So the majority of this property is sited on the flatter portion of the lot, which happens to also be the view that this applicant wants. Not that it has anything to do with the code, I'm just citing that. Two, our planning director also stated that, you know, this, in terms of fuel modification, there's limited, there's even more limited fuel modification because of the existing, the existing homes that already provide fuel modification. But ultimately, environmentally damaging alternative is for you guys to decide tonight, so you don't have to agree with either I or the planning commission, but those were the considerations.
Okay.
Can I continue?
Yes, that's right, you were interrupted, yes.
Okay, so Tyler, on the least, sticking with the least environmentally damaging alternative finding that we need to make, let's make this clear. I'm not asking why, what the argument is, one way or the other. All I want to understand is, what code provision, if any, tells us what the standard is for making that determination? So for example, neighborhood character, we know there is no standard in our code for telling us how to do that. What provision of the code, if any, tells us how to make a determination of least environmentally damaging alternative?
It's a complex question. I would say it's the entirety of the LIP, because there's multiple chapters involved, right? And you have to basically find that, you know, within the entirety of the LCP, that it's the least environmentally damaging alternative.
Okay, but I know we have to make a determination that every provision of the LIP is satisfied, but it seems to me that, and it's a little circular, because one of the provisions is a requirement for least environmentally damaging alternative. But take that one requirement out for a second, where in the LIP does it say how to make that determination?
We'd have to scour a little bit. I don't know if it directly says that, but it does say things like, avoid ESHA. It does say things like, grade on the slatter pads, right?
So... But those are, but those are specific requirements that are separate and apart from least environmentally damaging.
No, it is not, because it's the premise of protecting, the LCP is essentially an environmental document. So it's basically, all of these policies coalesce to become the least environmentally damaging alternative, as long as they're followed.
So I'll get into this more when we discuss later, but this is still part of a question. When, as a lawyer, I have been trained to say that when I read a code, there's not supposed to be superfluous language. That means, there's no provision that's replicative of a different provision, there's no point in that. Every time there's a new provision or a requirement, it's got to have some independent meaning. Sometimes it won't, but you got to figure out whether it does or it doesn't. We clearly have all of those other requirements you mentioned. Those are specific requirements, every one of them has to be satisfied. If that's the case, there'd be no point of saying that we have to find it's the least environmentally damaging alternative, because it would already be encompassed by all those other individual findings. So I'm looking to, and I can't find it, I'm looking for where in the code it tells me how to make that specific finding, separate from all those other specific findings I'm required to make. It can't be the answer is by making the other findings. So is the, or is the best answer you have is that that's all there is, really, just you just have all these other specific findings? And Maureen, if you want to answer, that's fine.
I'm looking at Trevor to start this conversation.
Sure. This is a, this is one of the general findings required for coastal development permit. Every permit needs to be compliant with the LCP, and then be the least environmentally damaging alternative. And the way that the LIP, you know, measures the damage to the, what would be the analysis for the least damaging alternative, is there's a number of policies you have to balance, you know, and they're laid out throughout the LCP, you know, minimizing grading, protecting views, protecting, you know, ESHA, and you're balancing these different policies and implementation requirements to provide what is the least damaging alternative of putting the project forward.
Well, so I'm just going to say, and you know, I think the parties will benefit from hearing this in advance. Again, I have scoured the code, I can't find a standard for how, a stated specific standard for how to make that finding. I think we've got substantial discretion in determining how to make that finding. I got to say, you know, just common sense says to me things like, a project that takes up a smaller development area is less environmentally damaging than one that takes up a larger development area. A project that creates less land for wildlife is more environmentally damaging than one that leaves more room for wildlife. A project with a given carbon footprint is more environmentally damaging than one that has a smaller carbon footprint. I don't suspect that our code means those things, but it could, because that's, to me, those are plain English words, environmentally damaging, least environmentally damaging. Any, that would mean to me that if this project can be accomplished with less carbon footprint, with less space, with less anything that affects nature, then it's not the least environmentally damaging. And what I'm looking for staff to tell me, if you can, is why is that wrong? Where in the code does it tell me I don't have that liberty?
I'm going to say again, it is not the staff that makes this determination tonight, it is the city council. So you can deliberate with your council members and determine whether or not the project before you is the least environmentally damaging alternative.
Tyler, I appreciate that. I'm not, I'm not, I don't mean to be fighting with you, and if it seems that way, I apologize. and if it seems that way, I apologize. I'm actually saying, I understand you're not making the finding. I completely get that. What I'm asking is for your guidance as our staff member for why am I wrong, if I am, in saying that when I look at the code, I can harmonize what I just said with what I have to find? Because I don't want to do the wrong thing. I don't want to, I don't want to not apply our code. Separate, though, from the way you've done it in the past, where in the code would I look to to tell me, "No, that's a wrong way to think?"
As I stated, and as the city attorney stated, it's the congruence of all of the policies and the chapters of the LIP that coalesce together.
Okay, fair enough.
It's funny, I think, to take your examples right there, the only way to comply with all those is to not build it at all.
I think that that's, the extreme answer would be correct, but there are many gray, shades of gray in between nothing and the full boat, and I think that's our job is to figure it out.
May I interrupt?
Well, I have another question, another specific question. But if you want to go ahead.
Well, it's on that, but I was just going to say, I mean, I think this is the, the parameter that was, that every community has set forth, and why we have a zoning code. So we have community development standards that we believe are correct for our community. Our general plan outlines that, our municipal code outlines that, and our LCP, and the LEEP, and the LIP outline exactly what we believe the maximum amount somebody can propose development on their property is what our community finds is the maximum acceptable impacts that a property is allowed to have on a parcel.
Right, I get that. That's like the argument, that if the speed limit's 55, you're entitled to go 55, which you're not, because there's another code provision that says you've got to drive safely. So...
But that's why we also have allowances for reductions in the codes if the property meets certain development standards, such as there's a hillside. We have a reduction on how much square footage you can build, how tall a building can be. If a property is determined to have ESHA, it's also further reduced in the amount of square footage it can have. The types of other features that a property can have develop, depending on the special nature of that particular parcel. So limitations are put in there, such as your argument, yes, the speed limit may be 55, but if it's raining, you should go slower.
Right, but it doesn't say what speed you go in the code. You just have to use common sense and judgment. My next question is, could you, could you put back up the first slide that showed the protected view of this particular property in appeal number two?
Are these questions that we could go through after public comment? Or is this relevant first?
Well, my understanding is that this is the time we ask questions, then we get the public comment, then we, maybe that'll engender more questions, but then we debate, but these are questions. The, okay, yeah. I'm trying to understand, I see where it's 22 feet, and I see where it's less than 18. Where's the 18-foot demarcation in that picture?
In this one, so this was taken really early on, and in fact, this was taken before the first planning commission. I had the applicant do some revisions after this, but the heights are correct, but the demarcations were not on this at the present time. This was before the first planning commission meeting.
So when I look at that picture, and it's, it's, it's not clear to me. I tried to figure this out earlier. Let me back up first and say, it's my understanding from prior appeals that if there's one inch of a mountain view or an ocean view that is taken away by, by going over 18 feet, then you can't go over 18 feet. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's, that's how we usually apply it, yeah.
Okay. So when I look at the, the lower of the two red arrows, which it says 22 feet, I see that encroaching on the, as it goes over, I see it very slightly, very slightly, but encroaching on the mountain. Am I wrong in what I'm seeing?
You are, because, not that you're wrong, that's what's literally in front of you, but what you're not seeing is a solid wall that is 12 to 15 feet tall once this house is built, so you will not see that anymore, in reality.
I'm confused about that, because I thought that you get 18 feet, and that above the 18 feet, you can't take away any view of the mountainside.
It's 18 feet as measured from a adjacent grade. So on that, on the, on the opposite side, there's, the hillside descends. And so that side is 22 feet, because he has kind of like a subterranean garage that's notched into the hillside. But as the property steps up, let me try to, let me try to show you. As the property steps up, the north elevation here, that side of the home, where I have the eastern neighbor's view depicted there on the very left, the grade is higher. And the house from, as measured from the grade at that point, is only 12 feet tall. And that's their view.
Why is the red string line going up on an angle?
Oh, yeah, so these are just showing you the relationship to the pole, to the elevation view, and what you're looking at. When, when the house gets built, as I said, that 15 to 12-foot tall solid wall will be present in reality when it's constructed.
Okay, so, and then one last question about this diagram. Glad you put that one up. So plainly, where it says 12 feet at the far right of the structure, that's not just 12 feet interior, correct? It's, it's, it's...
Measured from the exterior, yeah.
Yeah.
The north elevation there shows you that the grade steps up.
Right. And I, I thought, so we disregard the new grade that has to be created for purposes of building the structure? We only measure from the natural grade that existed before the building is put there? Is that accurate?
It's finished or natural grade, in this case, natural grade is, it was unaltered. So this is, this is the, how height is measured from adjacent grade, yeah.
That's the natural grade. Isn't the finished grade the one below it that it's going to be, that the building's going to be placed on?
Finished grade is the, as you see, the cut there. Yes, there is a divot, there is a divot. But again, that's a subterranean portion of the property.
Isn't it the lower of the finished or natural grade?
Not, not always. If, in cases of, in cases of a basement, is not, we do not count that as the finished grade. It's, it has like a subterranean feature, yeah.
So everything that's below the natural grade, you have to go below a floor? Below your ground floor to get down to?
I understand where you're going, but let me, let me put it to you in a different, different way, okay? Let's say the applicant got rid of the 22-foot portion on the other side completely, and they just did a, just did a pitched roof from that angle to that angle. And at all points, it was 18 feet, at all points. You'd have the same impact. The wall would still be present.
So where it says 12 feet, it would be 18 feet from the natural, from the, from the refined grade? The finished grade?
So the, let me see if I can explain, I'm sorry, Tyler. So when you're developing a property, the natural grade that is out there, that's your zero point. And whether or not you dig down for foundations and everything, you start at that natural grade as your zero point for measuring the height of your building. So in this case, adjacent to that natural grade where that 12 feet is, it's just going to be, if you measure, you keep that same grade level, and then the building goes up. It could go up to 18 feet, or it could go to 12 feet. In this case, from the natural grade that's going to be measured from, when the building is cut in, you still measure from that natural grade.
Oh, that's what I'm testing that, I'm testing that, what you just said, whether that's accurate or not under our code. I understand that's your understanding.
If you go down.
I understand that's your understanding, and I don't share it yet. I'm trying to find out whether that's the way the staff interprets it and understand why.
Okay.
That's pretty accurate, okay, yeah. So they could, so in theory, this exact structure could have another six feet where it says 12 feet, and, and no other change? It could add another six feet and still be within law?
For hillside properties, it's very typical that they kind of have a stepped, stepped design.
No, but I'm saying, if this exact structure, as proposed, with the subterranean cut, were to want to add another six feet at the far right, could they do that and say that's only 18 feet?
It's possible, but at the other points, they would be, maybe become more than 24 feet flat, and that would not be allowed. See what I mean? So the north elevation there is a good, good cut. So at that 12-point, at that 12-foot tall point, yes. At, as it descends down to get to those portions above 18 feet, he'd have to design it as such so that it did not exceed 24 feet on the other side. But could he go up, let's say he wanted to do a flat roof and wanted to go up another, to 14 feet right there, he could. And then technically, he could go up to 24 feet on the other side, and it'd be simply a similar impact.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for the explanation, I appreciate it. Those are my questions for now.
And I just wanted to confirm, the fuel modification zones from this, the main structure on this particular development, does it go beyond the property line to the west?
I have to, I have to re, take another look at what...
Okay, and then the property to the west, their fuel modification zone, does it theoretically...
Theoretically, yes. Theoretically, there's a 200-foot fuel modification buffer from the homes.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions?
I do, yes. Who owns, what property line are the eucalyptus trees on?
I'm sure the applicant and the appellant know better than I at this moment, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, who's is this?
They're going to be part of the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to start with appellate number one, which is Dawn Erickson. Clerk, I have a speaker slip in the regular public comment from Dominic Navarro. Is she part of the team, or is she part of general public?
She is general public. She's the daughter of the appellant, but she's not listed on the actual appellant of the appeal.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much for that.
She's just here as a member of the public.
Okay, great, thank you. So the appellate team for Dawn Erickson, if you could please come to the podium. I have Dawn Erickson, Travis Longcor, and Frank Angel. And if your team wants to just take seats on the side, whoever you want to appoint to have your speak. So you have 15 minutes for your...
This is Travis Longcor. And Mr. Frank Angel.
Thank you.
And I'm Dawn Erickson.
Welcome. So you have 15 minutes for your, we can hold on. How would you, would you like to reserve any time for rebuttal?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Would you like to reserve any time for rebuttal? Do you want to save some minutes in response to any of the other speakers?
Frank, would you answer that?
We would like to reserve at least four minutes.
Come all the way up, please.
We would like to reserve about four minutes for rebuttal.
Great, okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, did you say that there was a, her daughter was also, this is a separate speaker?
She is, and according to the city clerk, she is not listed on the appeal, and so she's speaking as a member of the public.
Does she, does she live on the property? If she lives on the property, then she would need to speak as part of the applicant team. Does she live on the property?
She's a part-time resident there.
Sorry, what?
A part-time resident.
Okay, if she lives on the property, she should be part of the applicant team, and she should speak as part of that.
Can I, can I ask you to please identify what code provision says that?
The, this is the, it's the property owner and the applicant, people that live on the property, the team that is, that is, that is appealing the project. They have the same interest, if they're living on the, on the property, they're part of the applicant team, that's...
What code provision says that?
We don't have a specific code provision defining that. That's how it's been applied in the past. If you live on the property, you'd be part of the applicant team. If the council wants to allow it to be heard separately, they can do so.
Yeah, I've never heard that. I'd let her speak.
Just to drill down on that, so if, if, if somebody has an ADU, and it's being rented by a third party, and they're also opposed to whatever it is that the owner of the property is opposed to, they're part of the appellate team?
If they, if they have an ownership interest, or if they are living on the property, generally, they are treated as part of the applicant team. I've never seen it...
Because they wouldn't, they wouldn't have an ownership interest, they just...
Is everyone fine with her speaking during the public comment? Of her, whatever amount of time that we, is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, fine, okay. So we'll put her in the public comment thing. So how would you like to begin your presentation? Is there supposed to be sound, or is this supposed to be sound? We're back. Okay, we're going to restart, we're back online, and the tape will restart shortly before it cut out. and the tape will restart shortly before it cut out.
That was the conclusion of your video.
Would you like one of your speakers to now come up? Your clock's running, so I just want to make sure your speaker comes up. I'll leave it to Frank, or to Travis.
I'll go next. I think I have some slides that were submitted before the meeting last time. Good afternoon, honorable mayor, city council members. My name is Dr. Travis Longcor. I'm an adjunct professor at UCLA Environment and Sustainability. I co-chair the Environmental Science and Engineering Program. I'm a certified senior ecologist by the Ecological Society of America. I've spent 28 years on the environmental review board for the county of Los Angeles, where I've come to be a compatriot of our previous speaker, Mr. Schmitz, and got to know him and his projects over the years, and have been teaching about landforms and ecology to planners and landscape architects and ecologists for that time, and have a special research interest in the history of the LA area. Can you go to the next slide, please? I was asked to, to look into this definition of whether there's a stream on the site, and then secondarily to that, is that stream in ESHA? You know the definition now. I will add here, and I appreciate the legal precision about the code, and the second part of this, it includes watercourses having surface or subsurface flow that support or has supported riparian vegetation. That's not obligatory, and staff presented that as being obligatory. That's additional guidance for that first part, which is a stream is a feature that periodically plays water through better banks. The next slide, please. Here are the definitions I'm working from, and I want to be really precise about these things because I was asked to do something that's very, you know, it's a technical question. Is this a stream, and then is it in ESHA? And my definition of bed is a sloping depression through which water flows and is constrained by banks. These are in the literature as well. A channel is a concave linear route through which surface water flows. Banks are the sloping sides of a channel that constrain water flow. There's a difference between ephemeral streams and intermittent streams. An ephemeral stream is one that doesn't have contribution from groundwater. It just flows after rain. It's still a stream. There's entire scientific literature about the function of ephemeral streams and their values, and an intermittent stream is one that has groundwater that contributes to it. I did not consider a stream to be sheet flow over an area. We've just got water that's not constrained into a channel, nor is it rilling or rills, which are tiny little channels. You could maybe say they're channels under a definition, but I don't think that's what your code means. So it's not rilling and not sheet flow, but if it's got a bed in the bank and carries water, it's a stream. Next slide. Why do we care about streams, and why are they ESHA? They do good things. They manage our stormwater runoff. They allow for water infiltration. They clean out the water before it gets down to the beach. So as you put in and think about things like leach fields and whatnot that could threaten that function, this is something that we look at. Even if you're not seeing, the major value that we usually attribute with streams is they support riparian vegetation, which is a biodiversity benefit, provide habitat for wildlife. And Malibu has committed to protecting, and I will note, restoring streams within the legal structure of its land use plan and LIP as part of the rural character here and complying with the Coastal Act. The next slide. So you know the site here. I won't go into detail. We're looking at the, the feature that lies between the two properties as we've ever seen before. Go to the next slide. I visited, I looked at it, and there are very clearly bed and bank there. And the additional feature that I use to determine that, and I want to add that I'm giving you all of my evidence. I'm not just asserting that this is my expert opinion and relying on me being an expert. I'm showing you why I'm saying what I'm saying, and specifically the definitions. The other part about that, so you can see, if you go to click the button, you'll see there, there's a bed and there's a bank. And the other thing is that the sediment that is at the bottom of the stream is different than the surrounding bank, and that's really critical because what that means is there's faster flowing water there that's pulling away the finer-grained sediments and leaving the heavier sediments. And so we call this sorted sediment, and this is one of the ways that we know we're dealing with a stream that has a bed and a bank, is that the bed has sorted sediment. Sometimes the sorting is sand. There's no silt. Sometimes the sorting is a little bigger. Go to the next one. Here's another one. Go to the next one. And keep going. Okay, fine. This is what we refer to as a first-order ephemeral stream. And first order means it's the first one at the top of the watershed. Your staff member referred to this as a secondary drainage. That's not a term that's used to describe streams. The proper term here is that it's a first-order stream, meaning there's no other streams that are flowing into it in terms of branching into it. But as you get further down into the watershed, you get to something called a second-order stream. When two first-order streams come together, a third-order stream. Those are bigger, those are broader, those are wider, they can float more water. But this is a first-order ephemeral stream. Next. And it supports riparian vegetation. And as I said, in my reading of the code, it doesn't have to, but the fact of the matter that it does. Riparian, as you know, means just along the stream bank. There are six sycamores, and they're pretty much always riparian species. I know that in a document you got earlier, claims that I overstated the, the conditions of, the requirements of certain vegetation. I encourage you not to just trust me, but the fact that I backed everything up with specific quotes from the published scientific literature. Every single thing I've said here is backed up in the scientific literature by the references that I gave you that you can rely on me conveying them to you accurately. You have only my word that I'm conveying them accurately, but I have a lot to lose if I come to you and don't tell you the truth. So, six sycamores, three black walnuts, two coast live oaks. Coast live oaks are facultative, meaning they will occasionally be in riparian zones. Here, they're taking advantage of that water. Black walnut is a strong riparian indicator. And I'll also add, black walnut is a list of 4.2 vulnerable species in the state of California by the California Native Plant Society, meaning there is a special role there as well. And so what's in dispute? The city biologist don't, I don't want to use that slide. We'll just leave that up there. City biologist confirms the stream carries water. The new report sort of acknowledges that there's a channel, but then claims, well, maybe they dug it somehow. They didn't. There's sorted sediments at the bottom. It was not constructed by people. It doesn't matter when the riparian vegetation came in. That's not a criteria. I did ask the applicant on every one of these specific plants that I'm mentioning whether they were planted. She said no. She was very transparent about the ones she did plant. I'm not relying on those whatsoever. It's straight. The city biologist claimed, well, it can't be straight. It's just that way. Wrong. First-order streams are almost always straight because they're higher in watersheds where the watershed is steeper and the water runs straight. You can't get a meandering curving feature there. You can look at the historical photographs, and it's there. The applicant's biologist claims that you don't see riparian vegetation in 1928 and thinks that indicates that there wasn't a stream there. A, doesn't matter because it could be there today. But B, this was a period of intense agricultural use in, 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 in the area, and I should end there and tell you, that's my professional opinion, and I'll answer any questions on it.
Okay, you have 4 minutes and 21 seconds left for your entire 15 minutes. Do you want to? Okay, great. So you said we will now go to the appellate two? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so appellate two is Paul and Andrea Phillipson?
Can we reserve some?
Yes, how much time would you like to reserve?
Let's say three minutes.
Okay.
Can you put up my slide?
You should probably put your microphone down a little bit.
Okay. Oh, and to council members, Doug Stewart, I'm sorry, but I believe you were included with our invitation to the other one, so I'm sorry if you missed that or it was your fault. Okay. I don't want you to think we left you out.
May I ask a quick question, procedural question, before the. Could the clock be set down three minutes less so that we know when the time is up, that before the rebuttal's been requested?
Would you do that?
Is that standard procedure?
What was?
That we change the clock to 12 minutes so that when they reach the end of the time, they have a better understanding of where they are in the.
Usually, we keep the clock up, but then the clerk can remind them.
It beeps. It'll, that single beep that we heard where it prompted them to stop, that's their warning that they are at, I put it at 3:30, so that way she has the 30 seconds also extra to realize you're encroaching on your three minutes. So that singular beep you hear is that warning you're encroaching upon those additional three minutes.
Thanks, I didn't appreciate that.
Can you do my slide, please? Next slide. Hi, good afternoon, council members. Thank you for listening to our appeal. This first slide is a summary of why we're here. We're here because this proposed development at 30053 Harvester is simply not compatible with the safety, the character, or the view protections of our neighborhood. Let me address the most critical concerns. First neighborhood character. Can you please put up the slide? Okay, this is my house. Can you find it on the map? It's the small little one, and it's 2,632 square feet. And next to it is Mr. Kent's total proposed development for 7,822 square feet. Can you put the next slide up, please? Mr. Kent, the staff states this home is not an outlier. The surveyed 27 properties within 500 feet show that actually only 15% are comparable in size. The rest are much smaller. In fact, this project is 112% larger than the neighborhood average. The staff cherry picks five homes from the edges of the radius, but the reality is clear. This structure does not match the established scale of our street or community. Everything in red is approximately 3,600 square feet, and Mr. Kent's proposal is double that. Next slide, please. Can you hit the video? Second is the increased fire hazard. Our home was able to be saved during the Woolsey wildfire because we had defensible space around us. The next slide, please. Can you hit the video? Now, imagine replacing that buffer with a 22-foot-high wall running nearly 100 feet long, just feet from our home. The current proposal places the development with only a minimum 13.6-foot setback from the property line. And even the compromised version only gives us 18.6 feet of setback. Next slide, please. This is our home after the Woolsey fire. This is life and death. We are not requesting, we are requesting 30 to 33 feet of setback from the property line, which would be a typical 20-foot driveway plus the minimum proposed 13.6-foot setback that they put, to protect both homes from catastrophic wildfires. Next slide, please. The staff report claims that our primary view determination doesn't apply because the obstruction is under 18 feet. But the photo used in the record is misleading. The poles labeled as 11 to 13 feet, and in the first staff report, they reported them as 12 to 10 feet, are actually six foot higher. They're 17 to 19 feet, and one is clearly labeled at 22 feet. Next slide, please. These are not just small measurement errors. They are critical violations of our protected view corridor. And no planner came to verify the story pole heights in the field as required by Malibu's own procedures. Next slide, please. The fourth issue is nuisance, the nuisance impacts. If this project is approved as proposed, we'll endure daily permanent intrusions. We lose privacy. There'll be direct lines of sight into our living spaces. We'll experience constant noise with large, loud mechanical equipment placed on the side closest to us, pointed directly at our home. You can see where the tree is marked next to my home. That is where his mechanical equipment is. That is my outdoor space, that little blue outline. An established mature tree that marks the property line is now threatened because the proposed structure is being built far too close to its root zone. That tree buffers both homes and is ecologically valuable. Next slide, please. We lose natural light, sunsets, dark skies, views of the ocean and the Santa Monica Mountains due to a wall rising two stories just outside our windows. And you can see how far or how close the story poles are to our house and the sunlight that comes in now. And that's about, I don't know, 6 o'clock, 6:30 in the evening? Last slide, please. This is the starting point of a real compromise. We are asking that they place the driveway along the natural placement that people drive up now, that they always have. You protect some of our border trees, and you relocate your mechanical equipment to the western side of any project. Council members, we are not, we aren't asking for a denial based on a motion. We are asking you to uphold the law, uphold Malibu's values, and ensure this project is brought into compliance. Please deny the CDP in its current form or require for a full environmental review. Thank you.
Okay, so you've, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, the clock is in front of me here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it'll beep at 3:30?
Okay, my slide, please. I'm Paul Phillipson. We appreciate our city council and the privilege to be here to ensure future development in Malibu is done with care and represents and respect for the residents and the environment we all cherish. We're here today to discuss the real adverse and lasting impacts from the proposed development at 53 Harvester Road. The residents of this city have placed faith and trust in our council to uphold our city's mission statement. Our city's building codes and regulations as written to mitigate harm and pressure and preserve the balance between what is here now and proposed new development. We are asking you to properly enforce these rules. There is no balance achieved when a developer has granted everything they ask for to the neighbor's detriment. In the staff report dated 4/18 on page nine, while the applicant could have clustered development toward the center of the property, they would not have achieved their desire of maximum motion views from their primary residents. Why does the report leave out the impact of views on our house? All surrounding neighbors have the same common goal, to encourage the city of Malibu, to build this development with care, to mitigate harm to our homes, and increase fire safety in our neighborhood. The staff report, the applicant is thus being asked by the neighbors, both appellants, to centralize their development toward the middle of the subject property. We have been consistent in our appeal of this proposed development since before the planning commission hearing last year, clustering and respect for the topography are requirements for this multi-building plan. The fact is, our home was approved before Malibu was a city. Our home is here now. Compliance with the city's building regulations are required now. This is the discussion for today. Our home and neighborhood are threatened. This council has seen two appeals and a letter of concern from the three most immediate neighbors surrounding this proposed development. A recorded PVD is being deprived. The safety of the community is further compromised by the undeniably dangerous increase for fire risk from 7,000 square feet of combustible buildings proposed to sit less than 26 feet from our house. We remember the Woolsey fire as vividly as the recent fires. Every homeowner in Malibu should understand the threat of all, the threat for all of us if a project like this is allowed. I stayed behind when the fire tornado roared through our house. I did not save our house. The large, open, clean, defensible space saved our house. I am here to speak the truth. There will be a line of new buildings 100 feet along our property border that entirely blocks our views and leaves the defensible space. blocks our views and leaves no defensible space between our home and the new structures, accentuated by mechanicals pointed directly at our house. What is most distressing about the approval for this design is that no feasible alternative site plan has been seriously considered. In a project that pushes every boundary and building code to the limit, where appeals have been filed and a dozen letters of concern from the neighborhood and community have been filed, why would the city allow this project to cause such harm without requiring an alternate site plan per our city's requirements? We have provided evidence this project, as approved, will have an adverse impact on the residents and neighborhood character. All of us here today know this plan can be revised to mitigate the adverse impact to our home and our neighborhood as required in our city's LIP. What you may not know is that the principal planner requested an alternative feasibility study from the developer, who refused to comply. Instead, submitting this letter in the staff report file stating any alternative site plan would be difficult. That's the letter there. How do the challenges of a new proposed development outweigh the protection of our home's PVD, precious wildlife habitat, and the fire safety of our entire neighborhood? The presentation prepared and submitted by Lester Tobias, who has worked in our city for decades with the highest integrity and best building practices as required in Malibu, clearly illustrates there are less harmful alternatives to the approved site plan that provide glorious views for the new development. We should not be asked to bear all the impacts of new development. There should be a balance which can be achieved through compromise. We have met with the developer's representative, Vidas, this morning and can testify that an offer to move the structures five feet over and back is not a compromise. We are still asked to endure the same fire risk, an extinguished view, and clatter of machinery. Please reconsider the approval of this project and take time to review alternatives with the developer. Your vote today can improve fire safety for the residents, preserve dwindling wildlife habitat, and restore a balance for our community and neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. So you have 2 minutes and 52 seconds remaining. So now we will hear from the applicant. And you have 30 minutes. Thank you. Would you like to reserve any time for rebuttal?
I would.
How much time would you like?
Do I have to state it right now?
They'll run the clock for you, and so you will not get any warning on your time?
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
You'll be responsible for reserving your own amount of time?
I will.
Okay.
Good afternoon, members of city council. My name is Gladys Fernandez-Kent. Steve and I purchased the lot on Harvester Road with plans to eventually retire in Malibu Park, close to our friends. Steve is a well-respected architect that has designed many beautiful homes in Malibu. We are not developers. We have proposed a 4,200-square-foot, single-family home for ourselves. I don't think that would be considered a McMansion. As you can see, we are caught in a tug-of-war between two neighbors. They each want our home pushed further away from each other. We are pretty much in a no-win situation. It is clear to us that we are dealing with disgruntled neighbors. They have benefited from living next to an empty lot for a very long time and do not want to give that up. They are now doing everything in their power to sabotage our dream home. For example, who in their right mind intentionally tries to turn their own property into designated escha? Our biologist, Edith Reed, who has been working in Malibu for over 35 years now, said that she has never seen anything like this, a property owner trying to create escha. And who in Malibu gives up protecting their primary ocean view forever and instead records their primary view looking out the backside of their house? These neighbors will stop at nothing to keep us from building our dream home. Because of their frivolous claims, we have had to endure years of delays, added expenses, and much unnecessary stress. We have followed the roadmap to approval and have complied with all the city codes, with no variances. We are the last lot to be developed in this area. It would be unfair to hold us to different standards than our neighbors. We urge you to uphold the planning commission's approval. Steve and I would like to reserve the remainder of our time for rebuttal. Thank you.
You have 27 minutes and 34 seconds. Okay. Now we will open the public comment. I have...
Madam Mayor, the first public comment card, they misunderstood and refilled it out. It's two separate ones. They handed before the item.
So normally, we would give three minutes? That's a duplicate. Got it. So normally, we would do three minutes per speaker. Is everyone fine with that? That's going to take us over an hour? We do three minutes per speaker?
I'm okay with going shorter.
Do we have a hard stop?
We do have a hard stop at 6:00 p.m.
What happens at 6:00 p.m. if we've not yet finished deliberating?
If we have completed the public hearing by 6:00 p.m., then we can continue the item to Monday or another date, and there'd be no more information to be put into the public record. You couldn't speak to anyone about the project. No one would have any more ability to present or say anything. When it comes back, we would just go right into deliberation.
But if we were not... To clarify that, if we've started deliberations, can we take a hard stop and then restart?
Yeah, you can start deliberations, and then you can continue the deliberations, as long as you finish the public hearing. If you haven't finished the public hearing, then we would have to allow people to come and speak again.
So let's push through the fair...
And the other alternative is you could reopen the public hearing and redo it if you wanted to. But my suggestion would be if everyone presents and you complete the public hearing, you contain that, and then as long as no one else speaks about it, no other information's considered, you would just be able to go right to deliberation.
Okay. Anyone else want to have three? Do we get to stay three minutes?
I say we power through the three minutes to give everybody a fair comment.
Okay. One thing I'll request, if you don't need to take your three minutes, I would encourage you to be as concise as possible in your comments. Everyone is fine for their three minutes, but if you can make it shorter, I would encourage you to do so. Additionally, we're not going to have any claps or boos or cheers or anything for everybody. If you want to express your enthusiasm or anything, jazz hands, just no outbursts of anything. Our first speaker is Peter Jones, followed by Charlotte Breeze, and then Richard Stutzman. And when your name is called, if you could move towards the front so that we can try and speed through the comments a little faster, it would be appreciated. Please.
Our dog died about four hours ago.
I'm so sorry.
And so Charlotte and I are going to do the best we can.
Thank you.
When Malibu residents look at our lovely neighborhoods, they see their homes and their gardens and a splash of the Pacific. When developers like the applicant, who is also a contractor and a real estate broker, look at Malibu's lovely neighborhoods, and what they see is a big, fat profit center. Most neighbors get by with an average total development area of 3,700 square feet. The applicant is demanding a total development area of 7,400 square feet. His proposed development is roughly double the neighborhood average. This is a moment to acknowledge the overwhelming opposition to the continued abuse of the city's neighborhood character by the manipulation of the city's codes. Our beautiful city was incorporated in 1991 to prevent Los Angeles County from turning Malibu into Marina Del Rey North. Now is the time to prevent voracious developers and contractors like the applicant from turning Malibu into Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Charlotte, followed by Richard Stutzman, followed by Ann Kaye.
Good afternoon, everyone. I implore you to save our Malibu neighborhood from overdevelopment and the destruction of yet another wildlife corridor. Just so you know, Sunday morning, I heard 25 birds in 15 minutes. When it comes to this neighborhood, size really does matter. And I'm going to skip a lot here. I implore you to follow the advice of former planning director, Richard Malika, who stated in a planning commission hearing on February 21, 2023, that a project could be smaller and could be denied on the basis it is too large. And I quote, this was at a planning commission meeting. "As commissioners, if you feel you cannot make the findings and you would like to see a smaller home on the site, and you feel it is out of character, that is where the commission has its discretion. You have the ability to say you can't make the findings, for it is out of character. Like commissioners, you council members can find that a smaller project is required to meet the character of the neighborhood. I agree with all the fire comments, and larger structures can cause wind tunnels effects, creating canyons throughout which the Santa Ana winds accelerate, increasing the probability of spreading wildfires. Once our natural environment and neighborhood character are gone, they cannot be restored. Deny this project. Protect our neighborhood, families, schools, wildlife, and the future of Malibu. As Laura Rosenthal once said, 'Western Malibu should be rural forever.'" Thank you.
Thank you. We're very sorry for the loss of food.
Sorry for your doggy.
Richard Stutzman. Ann, you do not want to speak? Hi, Richard, you have three minutes.
Hello, I'm coming in late to this game here. I live at 29859 Harvester, about five properties down from this. I have not followed all of the technicalities and the dialogue that's been going on here, apparently has been going on for a year or more. I go for a walk, hopefully, every day, right past this property, and I have noticed the story poles right in front of the eastern neighbor's house. And I've been appalled that somebody would build a house like that and completely block another neighbor's point of view. Escha areas, technical as you can argue that till the cows come home, but the fact that somebody comes in and builds a house with an essence, an 18-foot wall in front of their neighbor's house, that's not right. And I think just from a courtesy point of view and common sense point of view, I believe this council should ask the builders here to move this house. Big piece of property, seems to me they can move it down a little bit and open up a view for their neighbors. Again, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Ed O'Neill, followed by Dominic Navarro, followed by Cleve Van Hammerschel? Ed O'Neill, you here?
He might be on video.
Looks like he's on Zoom.
All right, so we'll circle back to him. Dominic Navarro, followed by Cleve, followed by Diane Rourke? Go ahead, Dominic.
Hi, I'm doing a video. I would like to point out that the original plans do have this pool fence wrapping around the entirety of the property, which is impenetrable to wildlife. I'm not sure if that's remaining on the plans.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Cleve, followed by... It's either D-H or P-H-A-Y-A-N? Anyone by that? Okay, great, thank you. And then Dave Ward.
Cleve Van Hammerschel, and I'd like to show video three.
Clay Van Hammerschel, and I'd like to show video three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, quick question. Just for the record, there's a number of videos shown, that one. Is, are you representing that that's the property in question, the property or the neighbor's property, not some other place? Just want to make sure.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, that is, that is the property in question.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to clarify. The fountain is on the property in question? On 30053?
No, 30069, sorry.
The Westbury property.
Okay.
Where the, where the stream is being claimed to exist.
I'm sorry, I forgot what you said your name was. I apologize. Thank you. You have three minutes. Dionne Rourke?
Yeah, my name is Dionne Rourke. I've been a part of the Malibu community for over 35 years. My mother still lives in Malibu West, and my wife grew up on Cuthbert, just down the street. As someone who's worked here for about 25 years, first with a local landscape architect, now with my own landscape architecture and consulting firm, I've worked in, walked in.
Can you go a little closer to my camera?
I've walked and worked on more Malibu hillsides than I can count. I have a written statement, but I really just wanted to, after watching, listening to both appeals and seeing the photos, I wanted to make a couple of points. If either one of the apparence homes were to be held to the same standards that they're requesting the applicant to be held to, their houses wouldn't exist. Also, there's trees on both of the lots that are on Malibu's invasive list. I would say 90% of the trees in the so-called Esha area are eucalyptus, and they're on invasive list. And I also saw some palms there that are, that are on invasive list in Malibu. When I was there before the planning commission approval, I never saw any black walnuts there. They looked really young to me. I did see a toyon, but they're not commonly found in riparian environments. Anyway, so I've worked on many, many projects in Malibu through the years. This property is not Esha by any standard that I've ever seen. It's not just my opinion. As said before, it's been confirmed by Courtney McCammon on three separate occasions and other consultants. The project, in my opinion, reflects the kind of thoughtful, site-sensitive design that we should want to see in our community. Steven Kent is not only a accomplished architect with a track record of contextually sensitive work. This is his own future home that he and his wife plan to retire. In all my interactions with him, in professional interactions, he's always made a point to respect the land and work collaboratively. And I feel that that integrity shows in this project. The buildings are well within allowable limits for square footage and height. They've been carefully clustered within the two-acre development envelope. And, you know, they've addressed the view determinations, as shown in the staff report. As far as neighborhood character, I feel like it's in line with everything else I see in Malibu Park. Speculative claims about fire risk and wildlife disruption aren't supported by the facts. Anyway, I suggest that this be approved. Thanks.
Thank you.
What do you do, excuse me? What do you do for a living?
Landscape architecture consulting and construction.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Thanks.
Dave Vort, Stacy Clooney Ross, followed by Craig Clooney Ross. No, press the button. Parker? Wait, it needs to be red.
Hit the button again.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Dave Vort, and I'm here today to speak in strong support of the proposed home on the lot that has sat vacant for more than 20 years. Steven Gladys Kent purchased this property in good faith after receiving information and confirmation from the California Coastal Commission that this parcel is not classified as an environmentally sensitive habitat. The plans were submitted legally, transparently, and without issue. Steve, as an architect, is not some out-of-town opportunist. He's a respected professional who's been building thoughtful, environmentally responsible homes in Malibu for over two decades. To portray him now, as some in the press have in this community, as a careless outsider looking to deface our coastline with a so-called McMansion, is not only unfair, it's false. Let's address the main issue here raised by the neighbors, and that is the claim that this property is in, is in Esha. It's perhaps the most concerning. Neither the city of Malibu nor the California Coastal Commission has ever designated this parcel in Esha. One neighbor has pointed to a reference to Esha on their own building plans as proactive or retroactive proof that the surrounding lots must also be protected. That's not how land use works. You can't self-declare in Esha and then use it to block lawful development on another person's property, nor does the existence of wildlife signify in Esha. We all live in Malibu. We've seen all of those animals on our properties almost every day. If that were permitted, no landowner in Malibu would be safe from their neighbor's opinion. The Coastal Act and the Malibu Local Coastal Program exist to balance preservation with fair, reasonable development. That balance is broken when longstanding property rights are subject to revision based on bad faith objections and pressure. Let's be very clear. This is not a fight about environmental protection. This is a fight about two neighbors who don't want a house next to theirs. And instead of stating that plainly, they've weaponized the environmental language to delay, obstruct, and harm someone simply trying to build a home on their own land. If this coastal, if this council caves to these tactics, it sends a chilling message to every landowner in Malibu that even when you follow the law, play by the rules, and respect the process, you can still be stopped by noise, misinformation, or an annotation on someone else's blueprint. Please do not let fiction overrule fact. Let's approve this project, not just because it's right under the law, but because doing so defends the integrity and values of this city. Thank you.
May I ask him just a quick question?
Yeah.
You started off your presentation saying they got some confirmation from the Coastal Commission that there was no Esha there.
Yes. Yes, they looked, they looked, went, before they bought that property, they looked at that, I'm sorry.
No.
Oh. There, there was, nobody ever brought the.
I've never seen any, nothing from the Coastal Commission.
Nobody's ever seen anything with Esha on it either. When you bought the lot, when they bought the lot, no one's ever brought up Esha.
All you stated was that the Coastal Commission confirmed that there's no map to Esha, right?
Yeah. According to the Coastal Commission, there's no map that says that is an Esha parcel.
Nobody disputes that there's no map to Esha. Thank you.
Just wanted to understand.
Thanks, yeah.
Thank you. Stacy Clooney Ross, followed by Craig Clooney Ross, followed by Steve Gubin.
Hi. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Stacy Clooney Ross, and I'm here today to speak in support of the project at 30053 Harvester. This project has been designed in full compliance with all applicable zoning regulations. It was recommended by staff, approved by the planning commission, and reflects a responsible, sensitive approach to development. So why are we here? Because two neighbors who have lived for decades next to an undeveloped piece of property have decided that they don't want anyone building next to them and have done everything possible to try and stop Steven Gladys from building their dream home. It is undeniable that they are using Esha as a weapon in their appeal. Your own city biologist declared it not Esha. When Steven Gladys purchased the property, they did their due diligence and were told unequivocally that the lot was not designed as Esha. They relied on that information, as anybody would, to make a responsible and compliant design. Now, after every surrounding property has already been developed, some with retaining walls, structures, and full lawns right along the same drainage channel in question, they are being told that their property is Esha and must be protected. It's deeply unfair to change that designation now. Let's be clear, this is not a stream. It's a flat, dry channel that carries runoff from a large culvert up on Cuthbert, which originates from a paved road. It's not a natural watershed. It's engineered drainage. The neighbors across the street have lawns and homes much closer to this same channel, yet somehow, this parcel is being flagged as protected land. Declaring this area protected now after years of nearby development is arbitrary and discriminatory. Why have zoning codes if we disregard them on a whim? The city cannot act like a private HOA. This project meets all of the requirements of the planning commission approved with its staff's full support. So why are we moving the goalposts and entertaining appeals that disregard the black and white language of our planning code? Changing the rules after the fact undermines the trust in this process. The Phillipsons and our architect Lester Tobias are arguing that this new build is too close to theirs, but just down the street, Steve designed my home right next to one of Lester's designs. They're about 30 feet apart, the same as the proposed distance between the Phillipsons and this project. No one had any objections then, and now suddenly 30 feet isn't enough? Clearly a double standard. New builds at 29979 and 30021 are about 18 feet apart. That's why the planning commission didn't even discuss this issue. The building pad is obviously where the ocean views are, the very reason Steven Gladys bought the property. If they're forced to move the house downhill, they'll lose the ocean views, and it would also create new conflicts. There's no winning here unless they stick to the rules. This project is modest by Malibu Park's standards. It's a 4,200-square-foot home, broken into separate volumes, pushed into the natural topography, and set far back on the lot to minimize its impact. It's not a spec home or a big box development. It's a beautiful design and respectful of the character of our neighborhood. Steven Gladys have done everything right. It should not be about who has more friends, louder voices, or more influence. It's about fairness, consistency, and respect for your own zoning rules. I urge you to uphold the planning commission's decision and allow the project to move forward.
Thank you. Craig Clooney Ross, Steven, and then Joe Drummond, and we'll check out the people there.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Craig Clooney Ross, and I'm here to speak in support of Steven and Gladys Kent's project at 30053 Harvester Road. I have lived in the Malibu Park area since 1993, and my wife Stacy has lived here her entire life. Up until November 9, 2018, Malibu Park was primarily an old-school neighborhood with the majority of homes being single-story ranch-style that were built in the '60s and '70s, our own home at 29960 Harvester Road being one of those. I might also add that everything on both of our properties burned in the Woolsey Fire. I stayed behind to fight on one two-acre property with a single structure that was very defensible, and I still was not able to save that. Probably the primary reason was the extremely tall eucalyptus trees on my neighbors that bordered my property, those same trees that I see on both of the apparence properties even now. The Woolsey Fire burned 80% of the homes in the upper section of Malibu Park. Since then, the neighborhood has slowly but surely been rebuilt. It now looks completely different as a result of these new builds. The majority of homes have been completely redesigned, and in a lot of cases, have increased in size and even added a second story. I would take this opportunity to touch on the subject of developers and their impact on the neighborhood. Let me clarify. Steven Kent is absolutely not a developer as a number of next-door people on next-door Malibu have painted him out to be. He is a very gifted architect who has designed a number of beautiful homes for his clients in Malibu over the years. I have met actual developers who have purchased multiple properties in the Malibu Park area, one right next to mine, with the specific intent of selling them as soon as the builds are completed. No one seemed to oppose any of these. They have built, in most cases, very large homes with no consideration of the neighborhood character or of the people living next door. Let's talk about the character of the neighborhood. On Malibu Road, Harvester Road alone, there is now a very diverse mix of houses, which include prefab, Spanish Revival, ultra-modern, and Victorian. This is the essence, this is, in essence, the beauty of living in a dynamic community. If we're honest, what makes a neighborhood special isn't the sameness of its houses. It's the people who live there, and I truly believe Steven and Gladys Kent would be a very nice addition to our neighborhood. I would also state that on my now-rebuilt two-acre property, I have every single one of those animals that were on those videos, and I enjoy them just the same, without having Esha or living on an undeveloped property. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve? And then Joe Drummond? Hi, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Steven Gubin. I'm a fellow Malibu architect, and I'm here to voice strong support for this project. It's thoughtfully designed, code-compliant, and it should be treated as such. Kent is an architect with a strong reputation and a long history of creating respectful, well-integrated homes throughout Malibu. The property owners have followed the rules every step of the way. They've complied with the local coastal program, respected setbacks, received sign-off from the city biologist, and completed all requirements for site plan review. It's my understanding that the city has made two rulings on the primary view determination, both confirming that the neighbors do not have a protected primary view that is being blocked. That should be the end of the story. A height increase from 18 to 24 feet, which is allowed in our site plan review, doesn't give license to reopen every zoning regulation. Site plan review is a narrowly-defined process meant to protect views and ensure compliance with objective standards. It's not an invitation for neighbors to redesign the applicant's home to their liking. At the planning commission hearing, not a single commissioner questioned the setbacks because they are black-and-white zoning requirements. They're not opinion-based. They are measurable and enforced consistently. That clarity is what gives our process credibility. What we're seeing now is an effort to lean on neighborhood character, a term that is not defined in the Malibu Code and lacks any objective criteria. Unlike neighborhood standards, which are codified, character is subjective and difficult to apply consistently. Is this project being used as a test to set precedent to open the door for new policy tools aimed to reduce TDSF? That question should give us pause, especially in a neighborhood where many existing homes are far larger than the one being proposed. This is a 4,200-home well within reason of Malibu Park. Stevens and Gladys are not developers. They are longtime property owners in Malibu, building a single-family residence. The city told them their lot was not in Esha, and the city biologist confirmed that determination in writing twice. That's all on public record. If professionals and property owners can't rely on clear direction and formal findings from the city, how are any of us supposed to proceed with confidence? What message does that send to others trying to build or rebuild in good faith? When council and commissioners repeatedly override staff recommendations without clear justification, it creates instability, not just for applicants, but for the city as a whole, and we lose staff. It's already challenging enough to build in a home in Malibu, but if the approval process becomes governed by shifting opinions rather than objective codes, we risk turning a public agency into a private HOA. That opens the door to unpredictability, inconsistency, and unnecessary legal exposure, and undermines the transparency and fairness that residents, architects, and city staff all rely on to move projects forward responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Joe, you have a number of donated. Deborah Decray? Thank you. Chris? Thank you. Jan? Thank you. Phil Sampson? Thank you. And? Marie? Parker? You have a slide. Marielle, thank you. Okay, Joe, you have eight minutes. I'm just waiting for my slideshow. I don't think I'll use up eight minutes just to warn you. Oh, Marielle, I think it's for Ryan. I think I only need seven minutes just to. She was attached to yours. Oh, she was attached to mine? Okay. Yeah. Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Joe Drummond, and I represent Malibu Township Council, a nonprofit group that has advocated for safe, responsible, and environmentally sound development in Malibu since 1947. Tonight, I urge you to deny the proposed development at 30053 Harvester Road and uphold the appeal. There are serious concerns, not just for the environment, but for our neighborhood character, public safety, and the very future of Malibu. So I am very surprised that planning is recommending approval with so much opposition and evidence and being directed in the past by the past city manager to not recommend approval or denial of contentious projects. Okay, how do I do this? Oh. I don't know. I don't know, I'm just erasing it. Oh, okay. First, this project would encroach First, this project would encroach on a critical wildlife corridor, including multiple endangered and threatened species such as bell's vireo, monarch butterflies, western bumblebee, riparian rabbit, et cetera, without the required environmental studies completed. The city's own biologist has not finalized necessary reviews like wetland delineations and streambed alteration agreements. The Department of Fish and Wildlife emphasizes that this land has essential wildlife connectivity and thus must be treated as environmentally sensitive habitat area, requiring setbacks larger than the proposed 20-plus feet. City planning is actually removing wetlands from ESHA map, so this is something that I'm not surprised they're not recognizing this as ESHA even though it is. If the neighboring properties and even Malibu High School were held to higher setbacks to protect our streams, this project should be no exception. Even in Edith Reed's report dated June 28, 2023, inspected during the dry season, she calls a stream ephemeral, which is a vital source of water in arid regions like ours for many ecosystems and communities, especially during dry periods. Oh, this is the old slideshow. This is not the new one. Anyway, "They provide habitat and breeding grounds for various species and help filter pollutants and excess nutrients from runoff, contributing to downstream water quality." Can we stop the clock? I just, this is not the correct...
Did we load the wrong slideshow?
Yeah. That was last week's, but, sorry.
Were the initial slides the same?
It's, there's a couple that are different. That was, I just don't want to be off on my presentations.
You probably submitted a supplemental.
Is this the slide, is this the only slideshow you sent over?
No, I sent one this morning. Yeah. This was last week I sent this one, but, and he said he received it, but...
Can we take a short bathroom break?
Let's take a five-minute recess for, please be aware we're in the middle, no communication with the council. Thank you. Where's Joe? Do we need to wait for him?
No, we can start without Joe.
Okay. Ms. Drummond, please continue.
Thank you, Parker. Oh, where'd it go? Oh, thank you. So I took this picture last year, and it shows the stream provides habitat and breeding grounds for various species and help filter pollutants and excess nutrients from runoff, contributing to downstream water quality. And this is Elise Bell's vireo, which, as you know, I'm an avid bird watcher, and this is recorded in eBird. The ephemeral streams are also protected under state programs because 90% of California's wetlands have already been drained and destroyed. Strong protections for those that remain are vital. Second, the design is unnecessarily damaging to the environment. When the lot was sold, it included a more responsible plan clustering structures centrally on the property. Instead, the developer has maximized footprint, pushed construction towards neighboring homes, threatened to establish native trees, and endangered a potential monarch butterfly habitat. Oh, and there's a video to play? I don't know how to play it. And you did see this already. Where am I? "The ADU should be relocated to minimize impact on the ephemeral stream, the wildlife corridor, and mature vegetation. This is not the least environmentally damaging project." Third, there is a complete disregard for public safety and fire risk. We all know the catastrophic lessons from the Hill, Woolsey, and Palisade fires. New construction must prioritize radiant heat separation from neighboring homes. Not squeeze closer to older, smaller structures that are more vulnerable. This project should increase side yard setbacks beyond outdated minimums with proper perimeter fire access, not just for itself, but for the protection of the entire neighborhood. LEP Chapter 4.45 states to site structures to avoid causing fire hazard in very high fire hazardous zones, which all of Malibu is. Importantly, this just isn't a risk to the immediate neighbors. Malibu Park is home to our middle and high school with hundreds of students, teachers, and staff. An oversized improperly-designed compound in a high-risk fire zone adds to evacuation dangers, blocks emergency access, and increases the ignition potential during a wildfire. This project compromises the safety of the very families who make up the heart of our Malibu community. Fourth, this project shows disrespect toward longtime neighbors whose homes were built before cityhood. You can see in his letters in the staff report denouncing the neighbors' genuine concerns. Rather than being a good neighbor, the developer who purchased this lot only one year before this approval is robbing adjacent families of their sunlight, open space, scenic views, and peace. They propose exceeding height limits, squeezing up against property lines to maximize their own private compound space without regard for the surrounding community or wildlife. Fifth, the project's height measurements are misleading. The staff report, 838 pages, clearly shows that what's labeled an 11-to-18-foot structure actually reaches 22-feet height from the lowest grade, a clear violation of city codes. The SPR should definitely not be approved if it says it's only 15 feet, but actually 22 feet, as per the definition of height, where nowhere does it state it's to measure from the adjacent grade, but from the lowest grade. Just like with the Malibu Inn Hotel debacle, we're seeing a manipulation of measurements to skirt regulations. There are also, oh, I want to go back, actually. There are also uninhabitable, the uninhabitable garage, as they're counting as floor area in the two-thirds calculation, when the area is stated to be 4270 square feet, which makes this, the area, the two-thirds area over 18 feet, almost 50%, not two-thirds. Finally, this project is completely out of scale with the neighborhood. 18 homes along Harvester and beyond are all significantly smaller than this proposed compound. This project is two to four times larger than all the homes on Harvester Road. Most importantly, this project does not serve Malibu families. It caters to investors in short-term rental markets like Airbnb. Oversized compounds like this are not built for families to live, work, and raise children here. They're built as trophy properties or income-generating assets that hollow out our neighborhoods, push out long-term residents, and weaken the sense of community we are fighting to protect. Council members approving this project would set a dangerous precedent. It undermines environmental protections, public safety, and the very neighborhood fabric that Malibu must preserve if it is to survive the challenges ahead. In conclusion, we respectfully ask you to deny this project, uphold the neighbors' appeals, and stand for the Malibu that protects its people, its wildlife, and its future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Scott Dietrich, Paul Grisanti, and Pat Healy.
Thank you, council.
Can we restore it to the proper time? Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I get why the neighbors don't want this project. They've enjoyed this big open field for a long time. But that doesn't mean that this is the right project. It seems to me that we haven't looked at alternatives. This is maxing out what can be built. As Joe mentioned, very similar to the Malibu Motel, that somehow was designed brilliantly, I got to say, to fit into our code, but it was totally wrong. And I think this development is insensitive. I'm certainly not going to disparage the applicant. I think that's totally unfair. But when we look at, I don't know if it's an ESHA or not, but it certainly is a stream, and nobody has mentioned or shown video, are there frogs there? If you hear frogs at night, usually that's kind of an ESHA, that's a stream. When we talk about the appeal, the second appeal, I just hate that big wall there. Couldn't they do something different? That seems totally insensitive to the neighbors, and maybe without that, there wouldn't have been all these appeals. But I want to address the fire issue. As a National Fire Protection Association inspector, I know that you want 50 feet between structures so the radiant heat of one, if it ignites, doesn't burn the other. We don't have that in every property in Malibu, but we have enough room in this location. We've got to separate those. We cannot have one home just burning, for whatever reason, and igniting the other. But it's the neighborhood standard. How far do we push the limits? There already have been, as a result of fire rebuilds, some really large homes built in this neighborhood. That doesn't mean we should continue that. It's almost 8,000 square feet. That's just too big. So I, what I'd like you really to do is adjourn this and tell these guys to get together with Tyler and make a compromise. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott, Paul Grisanti, and then Pat Healy.
Greetings, Mayor and councilpeople. I am so pleased to be here today and so sorry it's taken us long to get here and so sorry that there is, this is an appeal of a decision that was previously made. This is what's known as a clean-sheets project. This is a project that there's no variances on. It complies with our square footage limitations. It complies with our setback limitations. And there is no ESHA designated on the property. And as we all know, that none of you are licensed to designate ESHA. I'm not licensed to designate ESHA. And even the person following me and speaking next isn't licensed to designate ESHA. What we do have is a pretty aggressive city biologist who's twice visited the property and said it's not ESHA. And then we have Edith Reed, who has represented several people who I know, who, one of whom ended up repairing a stream that crossed their property that a previous owner had interrupted. And another one who bought a piece of land, a very large piece of land, and in a gully, there was items that had been dumped there by the previous owner. And Edith Reed oversaw the remediation there. She's not easy. She's not anybody that anybody hires hoping that she's going to find nothing. She's, she's very good, very stringent, I trust her. I trust her. I think what I see in front of me developing here is a situation where the city of Malibu is going to walk themselves into a corner where they end up going into the business of buying properties. And I don't think that that's appropriate. I don't think it's a good use of public funds. And I think if we're going to put standards out there and somebody designs something that fits within the standards, and that we really don't have much of a leg to stand on when we turn them down. And as far as the setbacks from the property line and things like that, and the height, 18 feet is by right. And if, you know, if somebody complies with the codes and the setbacks and all the rest of that, I don't see it. The other thing I'd like to say is even in Malibu West, I've had a mushroom bloom last winter. I had frogs every night. I've got a lesser viro that comes and hangs out by my coming bird feeders.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Pat Healy, followed by Ryan Embry, followed by Mike Moore. Can you bring the microphone? Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here speaking on behalf of Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth. The applicant's project was designed without considering the constraints on the parcel, such as the negative impact on the residents on the eastern neighbor, the stream, and on the west, and the project's nonconformance with the surrounding neighborhood character requiring a smaller project. The applicant located its residence only 13 and a half feet from the eastern property line, creating a solid residence wall for the Phillipsens to look at. They will deny the quiet enjoyment and use of their property, to which they're entitled, and will suffer substantial loss in the economic value of the property. They will be deprived of their ocean views, mountain views, sunlight, their view of the sky and stars, and of any open space. There are more central locations for a smaller clustered project, which does inadvertently affect the neighborhood character. General Plan Land Use Implementation 9 requires that development not interfere with private views to the greatest extent possible. Therefore, the finding that this project complies with the general plan cannot be made. With only such a small setback, one purpose of the LIP is in being followed, which is to provide adequate light to the Phillipsens. The project's size does not meet the neighborhood character. Therefore, site plan finding that the project does not adversely affect the neighborhood character cannot be made. Relocating the proposed residence centrally will better protect both homes and from wildfire destruction. The stream meets the LIP definition of ESHA. The ADU is too close to the stream and can be centrally clustered in front of the residence. An LIP purpose is to protect and enhance the quality of the natural environment, which is not being done with this project. Due to the ADU's location, the commission cannot make the finding that this project is the least environmentally damaging alternative, where the reasons stated, including the fact that certain findings cannot be made. Please deny the CDP. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Embry, followed by Mike Moore.
Our request is you uphold the appeal and deny the CDP. The project is a maxed-out project. If you look at all the tables, like the side yard, 13 feet 6 inches would be the absolute minimum, and guess what? That's what it is. In the worst application, it's on what I call the eastern side. Your chart said it was the north side, but either way, it's up against a two-story wood frame existing house that's been there for 50 years, and it's just stupid. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. And we've got -- you don't need one reason. You've got 700 reasons why you want separation distance between properties, or they just keep burning. And you would think that the applicant would want to cite their house away from another hazard. It's required in 4.45 Section B of the Land Use Chapter 4, Fire Hazards, page 69, that you avoid the hazardous locations. And first of all, you shouldn't create one. You shouldn't put your house right next to another one, especially if you have a clean-sheet choice not to. Maybe you can impose that wisdom on an architect that's not taking advantage of that opportunity. Again, I'd like you to amend a condition for exterior lighting, Condition 54, that all exterior lighting be of 3,000 degrees Kelvin correlated color temperature or less on the property. That number does not appear in any of the lighting conditions, and it should. Same thing, there's no mention of the motion-activated timeout requirement in the absence of movement, the 10-minute maximum. This 13-foot side yard is ridiculous for a property that's this big and wide. There's some natural constraints on the property. There's a kind of a slope down on a third of it to, I call it, the west side. But this is a savvy developer. He knew that going in. And this is, unfortunately, a house sited on a ridge that's asking for a six-foot height extension above 18 feet, which is discretionary. And I can't believe you build that much 7,000-square-foot house. Well, first of all, when this city was created, 7,200 square feet was considered a mansion. We did that for 10 years. 7,200 was the maximum. So we're looking at a 7,400-square-foot project with 12,500 square feet of impermeable lot coverage, a driveway going down the middle of it, which is going to create runoff onto the public street in a heavy rain. And if you look at this thing from the aerial photograph, it looks like Van Nuys Airport. You've got these strings of hangar-type housing on each side of a central driveway. It looks commercial.
Thank you, Ryan. Mike, and you have Deena, so you have four minutes. Thank you.
First of all, I just wanted to say, we don't know any of these people. You know, after the Woolsey fire and the Palisades fire, we spoke up, and that's what we did on the front page of the LA Times. And so we're here to speak to the fact that we're here. Why are we here? Spending all this time, manpower, and energy into a new project when we have 300 homes that haven't been rebuilt from Woolsey? And I'll tell you right now, this is why. These are the players that obstructed everybody from rebuilding. And you might say, well, 20% of those 300 homes, they've sold. Well, you know why? They've talked to us. They've sold because they're intimidated by these characters, right? They're intimidated by those that are aligned with them, right? This whole process. I'd like to thank Tyler and Maureen for spearheading the LCPAs. Those were much needed. Those needed to happen six years ago, right? This is ridiculous. Just, you know, this is just a random project we just picked to sit in on, to figure out who the players are and where they stand on everything and the dysfunction that we're seeing. You know, looking at these projects with, what do they call it? Neighborhood character, right? The only neighborhood character we should be concerned about is fire hardening our whole city, right? And I see some of the biggest fire risks in that grove of eucalyptus trees that are non-native. You know, not only are they flammable, they choke out the native habitat and the native oaks with their leaf litter, and they're super thirsty. They drink all the groundwater and choke out all the native oaks. So get rid of all those eucalyptus trees, number one, right? That would be a benefit to your neighbors in that neighborhood. Number two is the ESHAs. If you look at all these ESHA lines, you can overlay that with the path that Woolsey fire took and the Palisades fire took from Palisades to our direction, and the MRCA, the unmanaged MRCA, no control burns to alleviate and protect our city. You know, you're putting us all at risk by creating these theoretical ESHAs. It's just ridiculous. And you know, and when the LA Times, they came and talked to us, you know, they asked us, hey, do you feel like you're part of the community? And I thought that was an odd question. I go, yeah, you know, we raised three kids here. You know, we learned to dive with, you know, Carter, Malibu divers. We did beach cleanups and the pier underwater beach cleanups. The kids were part of the junior guard, lifeguards. So we're like, you know, big advocates and conservationists. You know, why do you ask that question? And it's like, it dawned on me. Well, we're not part of the politically connected MTC and all these old guard, you know, people, you know, before Malibu became a city. But that old guard mentality's got to change. You know, these LCPAs, they haven't gone far enough, in my opinion. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers online? That concluded all our in-person speakers.
Oh, no. Well, I was giving them a second. Ed is on Zoom, and that's the only way he has to hand.
Okay, so let's hear from Ed, and then let's close the public hearing, please. Oh, that's part of -- okay. Well, go ahead. If Ed, if you're available?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Ed O'Neill, and we are in the process of rebuilding a home lost in the Woolsey fire on Cuthbert. I've known the Kent family for 15 years. Steve has worked in Malibu for many years. His daughter went to school here. This is not an outside guy. He's a great architect. He's got some of the finest clients in Malibu. He went to Cal Berkeley and worked for Frank Gehry for many years. This is what they call a clean-sheets project. Steve has followed all of the codes. I have read much of the staff report. And by the way, you've got an excellent staff there. It was very well-written. It was, and they did support the project. I would love if the scale and mapping of the house on either side of me matched what Steve designed here. I think it's terrific. I have been able, luckily, to work alongside the neighbors that I have, and I would never even thought or occurred to me to challenge a project that met all the -- that wasn't asking for a variance, that was meeting all the side yard setbacks, everything that's required. So this is -- there's one other thing that's very unfair, I think, about this thing. I can file a -- I've got an empty lot next to me, and I can, when somebody goes to build there, I can spend a few hundred dollars and file an appeal on that. And that forces that homeowner to wait maybe one or two years to go through this process. They have -- they forego easily $100,000 in interest, and I've got nothing to lose as that neighbor. So I think it's incumbent upon the city council to do the most they can to ensure that the ground rules we set for everybody are, in fact, the ground rules, that we don't allow this to become a voting contest on what the neighbor's house should be. That's not fair enough the way it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. For speakers not affiliated with projects. Okay? So we'll go to the appellate number one, which is Don Erickson's team, Frank Angel. And you have 4 minutes and 21 seconds.
How much?
4 minutes, 21 seconds.
Thank you, yeah. And the rest of my time, I leave to Dr. Longcor. Dear councilmembers, what nobody disputes about this project is this. One, the 1,400-square-foot ADU and two-car garage, the leach field, and any fencing in the steep westerly ravine of the project site are significantly less than 100 feet from the drainage channel and associated habitat at the bottom of the ravine. That's undisputed. Two, if this drainage qualifies as a stream, under the LCP, it qualifies as an ESHA, such that the structures proposed in the westerly ravine must be recited or removed to the east of the onsite access road, which, by the way, is all we're asking. We're not asking for much, let alone denying the applicant's right to build a single-family home. That this drainage meets the LCP's science-based geomorphological definition of a stream is indisputable. It is a, quote, "topographic feature" that at least periodically conveys water through a bed or channel having banks, end quote. That's the definition of the LCP. Not only that, its surface, its surface or subsurface flow supports and has supported riparian vegetation. As Dr. Longcor informed you, the existence of this vegetation is confirmatory evidence of the existence of the ESHA. And as stewards of Malibu's environment, you know that riparian vegetation improves living conditions for wildlife species, including pollinator species that rely for food and shelter on the riparian and adjacent upland habitats in Malibu Park's low-density rural residential setting. Now, city biologist McCammon and Mr. Kent's consultants may not like the LCP's definition of a stream, but that's not a legally defensible ground to ignore it. Ecologists with decades of experience in Southern California's semi-arid climate know that ephemeral streams, which flow during rainfall events, are common in this area and play a vital role in contributing to groundwater recharge and supporting our Mediterranean ecosystem. For Ms. McCammon and Kent's consultants, to deny the existence of a channel bed or banks adjacent to the proposed ADU is to channel crucial marks and ask you, who are you going to believe, me or your own eyes? Well, councilmembers, believe your own eyes. The characterization of the water feature submitted today by the applicant's consultant only confirm that she never visited Ms. Erickson's property. How can she so grossly mischaracterize the stream channel by referring to it as two separate small basins? Basins next to the pipes under Culvert and Harvester Roads, under Cuthbert and Harvester Roads? You have seen the video of the waters rushing down a well-defined narrow stream channel. You have seen the western sickomore. You have seen the black walnut, another riparian indicator species. They can't be just wiped from the actual conditions on the ground to accommodate an applicant's desire for a sprawling development layout, no matter how lovely that design may be in the eyes of a few beholders. Contrary to Mr. Kent's biological consultant, the fact that the stream ESHA is on Ms. Erickson's property is totally irrelevant, since the development on the adjacent parcel encroaches upon the 100-foot setback. The LCP is about preventing adverse impacts to the coastal environment. Property boundaries on a parcel map don't magically arrest physical impacts. Also, for purposes of ESHA status, it does not matter that north of the project site, the stream crosses a culvert, or that downstream, while crossing Harvester Road, it flows through a corrugated pipe culvert before reemerging further south. Nothing in the LCP creates an exception to stream ESHA status based on those off-site conditions.
Thank you. That concludes your time. Thank you. Okay, now we'll hear from appellate number two. And you have 3 minutes and 52 seconds.
All right, thank you.
Oh.
Two, that's fine, thank you. I'm sorry.
2 minutes and 52 seconds. Please begin.
We're not trying to stop development. There will be a house next door that we want to embrace. We simply hope that council stands for the residents and encourages the best outcome for everyone. The fire safety is real. The view blockage is real. There is misleading photos, but when you stand there in our home, as some of you have, you understand it's threatening and it blocks our view. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the applicant has the remaining portion of their time, which is, I believe, somewhere 27?
Before I begin, I'd just like to know if this is unprecedented to break the meeting halfway through the hearing and then resume again later? It's not. It's not. A better word is unusual.
Go ahead, please, begin.
Okay. Hello, members of the city council.
Could you adjust the mic? Thank you.
Members of the city council, my name is Steve Kent. I would like to start off by pointing out that our project is 100% conforming to the zoning codes. zoning codes. Malibu planning staff has consistently recommended approval of our project from the very beginning, and they have never wavered. As an architect, I have always tried to design my homes to be mindful of the neighborhood, and that is what I have done here with our own home. Before we move to the next slide, the story polls are questioned, so I'd like to discuss that right now on this slide. Those have been certified twice by a licensed surveyor, and in fact, they were checked again by Tyler this morning, so they have been double-checked and triple-checked and double-certified. And also, they go, despite what Joe Drummond said, they go from the natural grade, they don't go from anything else, they follow all the rules, and they follow the approved story poll plan. Everything on this project has been done by the book, so, let's see, let's move on to the next slide, please. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I had a little more to say there. Can we go back one? Okay. As you can see in this picture of the story polls taken from the street, I have pushed the, the house back to the back of the lot, and I have broken it up into different volumes, reducing the massing. I have also pushed the project down into the ground so that the most, most of the structures are below 18 feet. Okay, next slide. We purchased this property for the ocean views. As you can see here, the obvious place to put the house is on the flat pad to the left. Moving the house down the side of the hill would make our, building our house more costly and would take away our ocean view. Positioning the house on one side of the lot to maximize ocean views is very typical of homes in Malibu and this neighborhood. We should be able to enjoy the same rights as our neighbors. Next slide. In fact, if you look at both neighbors who are fighting our project on either side of us, saying that our, our house is too close to theirs, they have each pushed their homes to one side of their property as far as they possibly could to get their ocean views. However, they are trying to block us from doing the same. Next slide, please. If you look at the site plan, here, you can see at the top of the plan, the house is approximately the same distance from our common property line as the Phillipsons', so we're supposed to be held to a different standard, and we're meeting the, the zoning setback codes. The homes are nearly 2, 30 feet apart. That's a lot of distance for many, many homes in Malibu Park. This is not a small setback, this is nothing out of the ordinary. These houses are not tight together. Prior to our planning commission, let's see, am I on the right slide? Yeah. Prior to our, our planning commission hearing, I met with Andrea Phillipson four times to see if we could work out a compromise. We were in a very difficult position because anything we did to try to please the Phillipsons would aggravate the other appellant, Don Erickson. They both wanted their houses pushed away from each other, or our house pushed away from each other. Last year, we twice offered to move our house further away from the Phillipsons and push it back further, but the Phillipsons rejected our offer, or offers. This week, Gladys and I extended the olive branch again to reach a reasonable compromise, and it seemed that we were close today and had some hope, but sadly, we learned later this morning that the Phillipsons again decided to reject our offer. Of course, our, our house meets all of the zoning setbacks as approved and does not need to be shifted, this was just a goodwill gesture. Next slide, please. Are you sure that's the next slide? Could we go forward a couple slides? Could we go one more? This is not the slideshow from last week? It is?
I don't have it, sorry.
Okay. All right. Could we pause for a minute to try to figure this out? Because this is not the slideshow that I submitted. Could I get just a little more time, put back on the clock? Because I got a little tripped up here.
I stopped the clock when you started questioning the slide deck.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we ready to begin?
Just one more minute, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We have the correct one now?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we're good to go.
Your time's running.
Okay. So, we all, we know that you have received an avalanche of vicious attacks from Lester Tobias opposing our project. The Phillipson son works for Lester. However, let's just take a moment to read Lester's early assessment of my proposed house design that was attached to the very first email I received from Andrea Phillipson March 13th of 2024. Take a minute to read the highlighted portions. Lester strongly supported this project exactly as you see it today, and he told the Phillipsons, "I was a good architect." Who knows what he is doing? Lester goes on to make the exact same argument for our case that I will show you here. Next, please. The Phillipsons' property is on the left side of the elevation drawing. We made a lot of accommodations to be sensitive to the Phillipsons with the, with the design of our house. This drawing shows how I stepped the buildings into the natural slope so that they are least obtrusive and blend with the topography. I did the exact same thing that Marshall Lewis did when he designed the Phillipsons' house. Could we go to the next slide, please? Both of these houses are at the crown of a hill where you get the best ocean views, and they are nearly 30 feet apart. And both, both architects have, have employed the same method of sighting and designing the home and pushing it into landscape, and we have a common crown on the hill where we both maximize our views, just like all the other, other neighbors have done and, and around the neighborhood. Next slide, please. This is the view from the east side of our house looking from the Phillipsons next door. As you can see here, 98% of the house is below 18 feet. The only, only the small triangle in red is above 18 feet and does not affect any primary views. The Phillipsons are looking at the sky through that red triangle. The house is pushed down one story and is broken up into different volumes, just like Lester Tobias described in his email description of my design to Andrea. As you can see here from the dash lines at 18 and 24 feet, the house could have been much more obtrusive and still within the code. This all seems to be taken for granted and not mean anything. On average, our house is only 14 to 15 feet tall. This was not by accident. The Phillipsons do not seem to care about our ocean views, and they are only thinking of themselves. Next slide, please. This is a, this is the Phillipsons' real primary view looking at the ocean. As you can see, not one inch of our building obstructs their ocean views. Let's zoom in a little closer on the next slide. There you can see their view corridor to the ocean, and you can see that it's, that none of our building impacts their ocean view, and those are their real ocean views. Real primary, that is their real primary view, not, not the one that was, was recorded. So, let's go into the next slide, please. City planning came to the site twice and analyzed the PVD, confirming there are no primary view issues. As you can see from the photos, the view toward our house is an oblique side view, view from the Phillipsons. Their primary, their prime ocean views are looking away from us in the other direction, and they remain intact, yet they have no problem with taking away our ocean views. Next slide, please. Here is the photo looking at the eucalyptus trees that have been, they've, that was their main concern from day one. Can we please save the eucalyptus trees? We, Steve, what can we do? Can we work something out to save the eucalyptus trees? Well, I said yes, I would do whatever I do, can do to try to accommodate them, but ironically, they've tried to make claims that our house will be a fire hazard. Does anyone see how crazy this is? The house that I'm building is going to be non-combustible, we're going to have an exterior fire suppression system, which would probably save their house in a fire. And of course, the house is approved by the LA County Fire Department, and it's got a 30-foot setback, which is way larger than many, many homes in Malibu that the Fire Department approves. So, and they're also arguing that we're robbing them of tree, of, of air and light. Well, again, it's just a little irony that, that we see here with this, with this growth of eucalyptus trees, that some, all those trees are robbing them of air and light, but now our building is, is the, going to be the culprit. So, let's move on to, oh, yeah. Yeah, so I would just say, in summary, this is not, this is a completely normal situation to have houses 30 feet apart, and it's, it's much larger than others, and it's a lot of space, so, next slide, please. Here you can see there are plenty of other examples of houses in the immediate neighborhood that meet the same code with the same, similar setbacks, and some much closer together. There are many more homes in Malibu Park with tighter setbacks. Let's zoom in, please. You can see, these are all right close to us in the Phillipsons', and the larger circles are the 30-foot setbacks that, that we will have, and they're so much tighter. Next slide, please. These are right next door to the Phillipsons', they're not complaining about each other, they're 18 feet apart. Next slide, please. This is up on Bush Drive where Craig and I mountain bike together. Do you think the neighbor on the left tried to get the neighbor on the right to push his house down to the, where the pool is? Or do you think the neighbor on the right tried to get the neighbor on the left to shove his house closer to the street? Of course, that would be crazy. Also, I'd like you to pay attention to the size and bulk of these homes, and keep that in your mind when you, when we get to talking about neighborhood character. Next slide, please. So, this map shows the square footage of the larger homes in the neighborhood, just to show that we're not an outlier. Neighborhood character is not, not about averaging homes like the Phillipsons have done, it's just a, a subjective term that is not well-defined in the code. But anyway, you can see there's many large homes in very close proximity to us. Next slide, please. Neighborhood character. Neighborhood, neighborhood character versus neighborhood standards, don't confuse them. Neighborhood standards is written in the code, it's objective, it's well-defined and has parameters. Neighborhood character is just a concept with little reference in the code, if at all. It's subjective, and there is no well-defined policy for it, and it's very vague. Next slide, please. Let's take a little tour. These are the houses right across the street. Now that's a big box home, what you see there. I have not designed a house like that. Next slide. These are right behind us, Bruce Bates on the left supports our project, he's looking down on our property, and the other house is, is another very large house that's not broken up like my house is, so it's more obtrusive. And then you've got all the homes behind it that are all large Malibu Park homes. Certainly, I'm not an outlier with our house. Keep going, please. We all know this house on the corner of Bush and Harvester. Next. This is Craig and Stacy's house. I think the architect did a good job here, breaking up the house into different volumes like I've, I did with our house. Next slide, please. Another big house, big, big box home. Next. 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 That's a good one. So definitely, we are well within the, you know, what could have been done here on the property, and much less impactful. So, let's see, let's go to the next slide, please. This is the neighbor from up above, Bruce Bates, looking down on our story polls. He fully supports the project. Next slide, please. All right, let's get into the ESHA discussion. This is across the street from us. This is the, this would be the continuation of the imaginary ESHA that Ms. Erickson has on, on the opposite side of the street. As you can see, it's got a nice big brick wall, it's got a mowed yard, it's got all kinds of structures built up to it, and then there's that big box home creeping right up to it with all kinds of retaining walls. So, all the neighbors have built along the drainage channel from the top of Culvert all the way down to PCH. They are all living and enjoying their homes, while our property is literally the last undeveloped lot to be built. Next. This culvert is located up at, up above Ms. Erickson's property on Cuthbert Road. Erosion has occurred on Ms. Erickson's land and during large rainstorms, and was caused by runoff from man-made, man-made development above her property that is channeled through a culvert on Cuthbert Road. This was the determination made by the city biologists and two other well-respected biologists. Next slide, please. Of course, Ms. Erickson and her attorney, Frank Angel, have somehow managed to find an expert to miraculously assert ESHA. Although Ms. Erickson had well over a year to find someone to say that she somehow created an ESHA by her own doing, their bio, their bio report was just filed hours before our hearing last week. Mr. Longcor, who has made a career out of stopping projects, makes flawed assertions that these very small pockets of erosion somehow constitute, quote, "a stream." that these very small pockets of erosion somehow constitute, quote, "a stream," which absurdly begins and ends on Ms. Erickson's property lines. Of course, all three registered biologists, including the city's own biologist, who is unbiased, strongly refute their experts' false claims. And there's not a whole lot of bed and bank in these photographs that you see there. Next slide, please. And there was a video shown with a bunch of water flowing and ponding during a big rainstorm. Guess why? It's this culvert under, it's at the southeast corner of Dawn Erickson's property, going under Harvester. There's a giant stump blocking it, and the edges are all folded in, and there's no place for the water to go. So it backs up, and it ponds and erodes her property during a large rainstorm. And where's all that water coming from? It's coming from man-made development on Cuthbert Road. So let's go to the next slide. We would have never purchased this property if there was any indication by the city.
Oh, no.
Wait, are we back? Please continue.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay. We would have never purchased this property if there was any indication by the city that it could possibly be ESHA. When I went to the city for our due diligence while the property was in escrow, I was told by the city unequivocally that our lot was not in ESHA, and it was shown this map. Could we go to the next slide? Here is a list of all the written determinations that we have had since we started the project stating no ESHA and no stream. There are 12, 12 written determinations that there is no ESHA or no stream that exists on the property. I think this is unprecedented. So let's go to the next slide. Let's look at the experts. We have city planning staff saying no ESHA. We have Edith Reed, well-respected, longtime biologist, no ESHA. Courtney McCannon, the city biologist, ruling four times, four times, no ESHA, and she's unbiased. Then we have Marcus England, who had to come on board to dispute Travis's new report that was filed at the 11th hour last week after a year. And then we have Mr. Longcor, who is, has a PhD, or actually has three degrees in geography, and he is part of academia. He is an environmentalist who fights projects, and in contrast to that, all of the people above have tons of field experience, decades of field experience. They're not sitting behind a computer in an ivory tower. Next slide, please. This is Courtney's latest determination. This is her fourth confirmation of no ESHA. I know she's getting very tired of doing this, and the city thinks it's a joke, that this is just dragged on. To this level is just absolutely bananas. Next slide, please. This is Edith Reed's confirmation. Again, no ESHA after reading Mr. Longcor's report. Next slide. And this is the new biologist saying that Mr. Longcor's assertions are, quote, "nonsensical." And Marcus England is here tonight. He's going to speak for a few minutes after I'm done. So hopefully, he's queued in. Okay. All right. So those are the experts. In summary, it is difficult for us to understand how, after making all these representations to us before and after we purchased the property, the city could all of a sudden change its mind. We have trusted that you, we have trusted what you as a city has told us, and to call it into question now is not a fair or just process. And if you, as a city, think that our house is too close to the Phillipsons or too large, then the appropriate action would be for you to change the planning code and the LCP. It would not be fair to deny our project or send us back to Planning Commission when our project prescribes to all of the zoning codes. We have followed all the rules. We have complied with the codes. Please do not move the goalposts on us. We hope that you can see, we have done everything by the book and should not be penalized. Thank you. Now, since I have a little extra time, can we scroll way to the end of the slideshow, Back up, please. One more. One more. Okay, go forward, I'm sorry. Okay, so this is Lester's redesign. Lester Tobias took it upon himself, he's such a nice guy, he redesigned our house for us. Isn't that great? And guess what he did? He put the hammerhead turnaround right where the house should go on the building pad with the best ocean views. And Lester tries to argue this is the least damaging environmental alternative. Well, that's funny, because he's got giant retaining walls everywhere, and I have no retaining walls on my driveway. There's an immense amount of grading required for this. It's a complete joke. Let's move to the next slide, please. Lester gave us an upside-down house. He put the bedroom on top, living room on the bottom. We have a nice pit for our swimming pool with no ocean views. Wonderful. Thank you, Lester. Next slide, please. There's the hammerhead turnaround. Lester shoved all the buildings close to the street. I bet the neighbors will love that. I bet, you know, when you see my house, you'll see it's very respectful, the street. Next slide, please. Next slide. Oh, thank you, Lester. This is the entrance to our new home. Next slide. This is our house. It's not a McMansion. It's a beautiful house, set back far from the street. It's very respectful. Next slide, please. There it is again. It's not a McMansion. It's not pushing the limits. It's very respectful. It's very well-designed. Next slide, please. Here it is, taken from the driveway. The Phillipsons are behind us, of course, 30 feet apart, just like dozens and dozens and dozens of homes in Malibu. There's nothing unusual about the situation, other than they'll have a very beautiful home next to them that the neighborhood will very much appreciate, like all the other homes I've done in Malibu. Next slide, please. This is the slide from the Phillipsons' point of view. It's not obtrusive, is it? It's very respectful. I've pushed it all down. I don't know what they're talking about. So next, I'll stop here and bring on Marcus.
Thank you. So I did not come in here with a particular plan on presentation or anything. It's more as a response to what has been said so far in the meeting. So anyways, my name is Marcus England. I'm the principal of England Ecology. I have done a lot of work in Malibu. Just to clarify a point that Mr. Kemp made, he did not bring me in specifically to rebut Mr. Longcor's report, but he brought me on because of Mr. Longcor's report, and he wanted to have another biologist give, as he made it very clear to me, he wanted me to state my objective opinion. So if I were to be the first biologist that had visited that site, my assessment would have been, in assessing the presence or absence of ESHA, is that that low spot between the two properties is what I would just call a terrain depression feature. I wouldn't give it the title of being a stream or anything like that, and that it receives abnormally high flows because of runoff from roads above. And the things that are being called a channel are simply, they start and end on-site, and they are caused because of soil condition on the site and abnormally high flow rates that are caused by Cuthbert Road above. And since I've only got a couple seconds left, I want to note that there have been numerous references to some species that were misidentified. There is no evidence, at least Bell's Vario has ever occurred, the video showed a Pollock's oriole. It also noted a riparian brush rabbit, and that does not occur in Southern California.
Thank you. Okay. It's time to go home. You used all your time. That was your rebuttal time.
That was last.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait, but we had two and a half minutes.
She's saying you only give one term.
Correct. Is that correct?
You have to use it at that time, your rebuttal time, once you end, that's.
I didn't use it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we are done with public comment.
Are you closing the public hearing?
I am closing the public hearing.
All right. If you intend to recess at 6 o'clock, I would suggest not opening deliberations that could tempt people to try to convince the council members to change any views they have at this point in time.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to continue the public hearing to a date certain.
Continue the item.
Continue the item, excuse me, I missed stating there. Continue the item, public comment is closed, to a date certain on Monday, May 12, I believe.
Yeah, to the regular meeting.
It's pretty light. Can we?
We can add to it, although I don't know how light it really is. We are adding some amended items. I don't think any of our agendas have been light.
Well, perhaps the items that are not time-sensitive, we can.
Yeah, we'll try to take a look at that.
I'd suggest we put everything on the agenda. We can call it as we see it when we actually have the meeting.
I'd like to request that if we're going to continue this to Monday's regular meeting, it be the first thing we do, not even, you know, before public, general public comment. Otherwise, we're not going to get this started until 8 o'clock at night. But I also, let's say we start that meeting at 5:30. There's some preliminaries that we deal with. I mean, I imagine that we're not going to be done this appeal until 7:30 or 8:30 at the earliest, just so everyone understands that.
So what are our options as far as timing of when this can be continued?
So I believe the option for the council is to continue this item to the regular meeting on Monday, or you could continue it to, you have a reserved special meeting, you could adjourn this to the following Thursday, and.
I'm not here, next.
Or you could find another date to move it to. But I would suggest continuing to a date certain to the Monday meeting, and if you.
Well, I support doing it on Monday and getting it started as the very first item on the agenda.
At 6:30?
Yeah.
I would support that as well. I think we've held this long enough. This is a continuation of another meeting we had. This one needs to come to closure.
And the longer we wait between now and finishing it, the more people are going to be tempted to talk to us, which they are not allowed to do.
Yes. And I will, before we adjourn, I want to explain the rules about what will happen by contacting with the council after the meeting. So is that a motion to continue this item to our regular meeting on Monday at 6:30 PM?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Our regular meeting is at 5:30, but I just wanted to be clear, the 6:30, as in the sense, you still want to go through the consent calendar first.
5:30, I meant 5:30.
Oh, you mean 5:30.
Very first thing, come in, gavel it, and go right to this, finish this appeal.
And if it helps the council, Trevor, feel free to cut me off if needed, but the heaviest items that looks like we have on Monday are the mid-year report, the ambassador discussion, coming back with the resolution, and looking at security patrols. Those are probably our three biggest, so it depends on how you want to move things around.
Okay. So Doug, was it your intention with your motion to start at 5:30 or wait till after consent?
I start at 5:30, and let's pound through this, and we can always move the agenda around after we get through the view.
Okay, so we have a first and a second to continue this item to Monday, May 12, at 5:30 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the item passes.
When we come back Monday, where are we now?
I think that Trevor can explain.
I mean, I've got questions of the staff. I want to make sure I can get all those things in.
Yes, so the public hearing has been closed. All the evidence that we presented has been presented at this point in time, and no further evidence submitted will be considered by the council. Please do not attempt to speak to any of the council members about this item. Please do not send any emails or submit additional materials. They will not be considered. Some total of the evidence has been presented at this point. This will be a continuation of deliberations only. If there are questions for staff as part of deliberations on Monday, that will be allowed, but the public hearing has been closed at this point in time. So again, please do not speak with, attempt to speak with or submit more materials. Council members, please also do not confer with each other about this. You cannot speak with each other about this item. Any deliberations must be done in public, so not even speaking to one other council member.
Okay. Is it possible to have the city biologist present at Monday or available by? I prefer in person, but.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do. I got to figure out when she comes back, but we'll make it work.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have someone available.
I was also wondering if a fire expert or a fire chief could be present, possibly, if I have questions about that.
The fire code is handled during the building phase, so perhaps you, Lauda, can assist us with those questions? It may be hard to get somebody here.
I understand.
Okay.
Staff can make the request, right?
Thank you.
Okay, so is there anything else we need to do? Do I, what are my instructions for?
Do we need a motion to close?
Can I, before you adjourn, because I was going to say this later, we are being deluged with letters and emails and comments about this. I mean, it is a hearing. It's very unusual and inappropriate, in my view, to constantly be giving more and more things, one page at a time, as you're approaching a hearing. I mean, in legal proceedings, you file what you file, and then you're done. You don't get to keep talking about it. But I am going to look very unkindly on anything I receive. I mean, you've all been told, don't send anything else. If I receive one letter or one sentence about this, I'm going to publicly report it, and it's going to be problematic for us to do, finish this appeal properly.
And councilman, if you do receive something and you see it's about the appeal, please do not read it. Form the clerk.
Okay. Any special way for me to adjourn this meeting?
We can just adjourn it, we can do this to the regular.
We're going to adjourn until May 12 at 5:30 PM. Thank you.